Good morning, members, many members of staff. And firstly, I'd like to wish you all a happy new year and hope that she had a good Christmas. The Covid compliance report I'm going to take as read. And with your permission, I would like to say a few words, read the latest Ashley Murphy just at the beginning of the meeting. And just on behalf of the elected members and staff of the council, I wish to convey our heartfelt sympathies to the family of Ashley Murphy. Her death was a tragedy that has shocked and traumatized the whole nation. And the response of communities all over the country in recent days will have provided some small consolation to Ashling's parents, siblings, her former pupils and her wide circle of friends. Among her many talents and interests, Ashling was a noted musician and she performed in Sligo City Hall in 2017 with a cultist tour group. And she also played in Curlores Coleman in Gurching. And it has been called a watershed moment with the firm consensus that action has to be taken to make our society a safer place. And we will certainly play our part in that endeavor. Our yesterday, Gaurav, Council Maguire.
Thank you, Cahill. Look, I would like to join with those remarks. I feel particularly as a female public representative, there is an onus on us to speak out. In my lifetime, I have had physical, sexual abuse. I have endured three times when I was followed home. And on none of those occasions did I report that to any authority. There is an underlying belief in this country that we should be quiet and say as little as possible in order for the status quo to continue. And I agree with your words that I think Ashling's death, please, will be a watershed moment when we no longer adhere to that status quo. It only takes for one good man to be silent for that sort of abuse to continue. And so I'm calling on all of my colleagues here today, who all happen to be male, to call out when you encounter any form of sexism or misogyny. Because it is those minor acts which I fervently believe lead to the more serious incidences like and culminating in the tragic and shocking death of Ashling Murphy, whose you have outlined, Cahill, look, was a marvelous young woman who had so many talents which she shared with her entire community with all of her heart. And I would just like to wish the Gardaí the best in their endeavors to bring whoever is responsible for her death to justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Maguire. And Council O'Grady.
Thank you, Cahill. And certainly at the outset, I would like to offer my deepest sympathy to her family, her immediate family, and indeed her cultist family. And I quite clearly remember her performing in the town hall in 2017. What a gifted young Irish woman, a gifted teacher and a gifted musician and a wonderful daughter to wonderful parents. Certainly what Council Maguire has said, I would like to firmly support all of that. And I think we, as elected members, have to come out and be seen and be heard about the issue that has happened. I think it's a watershed moment for us. And I was very heartened yesterday by listening to Minister McEntee on her program that she hopes to have put forward by the end of March. But I think it's about education and it's about educating our children from a very, very young age. Thank you, Cahill.
Thank you, Council O'Grady. Council Clark.
Yes, Cahill, look, I concur with your words and indeed the words of my female colleagues. It certainly was a standout moment. It's a moment that we remember like the release of Nelson Maldado and other historic moments like that. I propose that we would write to Doral National School, to the head teacher and to sympathize with her colleagues and indeed her students of the school, which will be traumatically affected by this tremendous event. And I certainly will hope that this will change the way that women treat women, not only in the chamber. But I know that a former CE had to invoke personal people to ensure that there wasn't bullying continuing in the chamber and to our colleagues. And we have to treat all our colleagues with respect, not only women. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Council Clark. Council Bree.
I would like to be associated with the vote of sympathy and with your remarks, Cahill. The impact that Ashling's murder has had on the people of this country, I think, is a testament to her character. And as you pointed out, she was an exceptional musician, activist and cultist. She performed the cultist concert tours. She participated in the Fiddler of Duny competition in Sligo on numerous occasions over the years. And I think we now need to see concerted action to ensure that women can go about their normal lives without being in a constant state of heightened alert, without planning their route for safety, notifying friends and family of their whereabouts or looking over their shoulders to check for potential threats. And I suppose the best way for us to remember Ashling Murphy is to ensure that her murder acts as a catalyst for change. Thank you, Cahill.
Thank you, Council Bree. Council Maloney.
Cahill, look, I want to concur with your remarks and the remarks of all my colleagues. I think violence against women is so wrong on every level, indeed, all violence is wrong. And I think that this very sad happening brings it home to us the impact of violence particularly against women. Thanks, Cahill.
Thanks, Council Maloney. Council Gibbons.
Cahill, look, I'd like to be associated with all the previous comments. I felt myself that this country has, it's kind of a broken point where it's actually the people just seen what happened and had to come out, vent their frustration. The crowds that turned out onto the street of Sligo yesterday, which I was glad to be part of, and I actually ran into, because we're all staring, we've got a few words, he can confirm what I says. It was brilliant to see coming up to the end of the march that the people were still coming out from over the riverside. And the march had gone right around the town, Castle Street and right around. And that was the same throughout the whole country. And it was fantastic. But what I would like to see out of this, I would like to see change coming when it comes to domestic violence and threats to women. I want to see this being the foundation stone, that the people just had enough. I was listening to a radio interview this morning where somebody turned around and says, this isn't pitting men against women. This is putting the minority of men in their place. And those people need to be rooted out. Ninety percent or ninety-nine percent of men are decent, honorable human beings and treat women with respect. But it's that one percent or two percent that's out there that needs to be weeded out. This personally, myself, I think, as a father of children of young girls, I have two daughters. And when I, I won't go into the details of my other work, but the one thing that I want, I don't want to be in this situation that I'm sitting in my house in the evening and every time the day goes out, and even as a granddad, I'm the same about my grandkids, if they're outing, you're worried about, we shouldn't have to live in a society like that. The respect there for each other should always be there. But I was so, I couldn't sit at home yesterday, I think an awful lot of people was the same. I just had to get out. I'm not being smart, which is, the walk nearly killed me, I won't say it didn't, but reality to, I was so glad to be part of that yesterday. And it was one way of me venting my anger in relation to what had happened. Thanks very much, Cahill.
Thanks, Council Gibbons. Council Walsh.
Thanks, Cahill. And I just want to echo everything that has been said already. I think it's a turning point and hopefully it will be a turning point. I think it's very tragic that something like this had to happen for a turning point like this. I attended, like Council Gibbons yesterday, the vigil and walk in Sligo. I don't think I've ever been at an event, you know, there was estimated to be between fifteen hundred and two thousand people in Sligo Town yesterday. And I don't think I've ever been at an event with such anger, emotion. And I spoke to a lot of people in there yesterday. And there was a lot of men, women and children at the event. And, you know, I don't think any woman should have a fear of going out for a run or going for a walk or going to any outdoor or indoor space on their own. And I think, hopefully, like Council O'Grady has said, Minister McEntee yesterday has confirmed that a strategy will be brought forward in March. And I again, just to sum up, I want to extend my sympathies to the Murphy family, the local community and her friends in her community. Thanks, Cahill.
Thanks, Council Walsh. Council Mulvey.
Oh, sorry, Cahill. Look, yeah. Again, I'd like to concur with the words that you said, Cahill, look, and with my fellow councillors, the tragedy that has bestowed upon poor Ashling Murphy and her family and her work colleagues. And I think it has united the country, you know, in seeing that we do not accept this. And I think as, you know, as a community, the huge outpouring of floral and candle tributes and, you know, people have united to stand up and say that this is not acceptable. We all have mothers, wives, partners, sisters, daughters. And I think we all have to ensure that, you know, in this day and age that people are able and should feel safe, whether it be going out for a short walk or a run or whatever, that this sort of violence or any sort of violence against any woman, man or child is not acceptable. And I certainly support that we need to call it out and, you know, education and it's something we need to talk about more. I certainly sympathize with all of the Murphy family at this tragic time. It's a sad tragedy that should never have had to, it should never have had to happen. Especially Grivhan.
Thank you, Council Mulvey. Council Connolly.
Yes, Cahill. Look, I would like to join with all my colleagues there in this vote of sympathy to the Murphy family. As a father of two daughters and indeed four granddaughters, it rocks you to the core, this type of news. There is no way that they should have to go out looking over their shoulder when even for a walk or a jog or even when they're socializing in this day and age. Ridiculous. And this type of behavior has to be brought to justice and stamped out of our community. I'm delighted to be involved in this vote of sympathy. And thanks very much, Cahill.
Thank you, Council Connolly. Council Healy.
I just want to echo the words of all my fellow councillors. And as I suppose, this has really shocked people across the communities. In Connolly ourselves, we had a vigil, which means, and it's right. And as we said, it's time now people stood up and shouted out loud and clear, violence against women is wrong. And it's tough on the families, it's tough on the pupils that wouldn't be expecting that teacher to be, Ashling to be back in school today teaching them football and teach them music. And I suppose if we do look at it, since 1996, two hundred and forty-four violent murders against women occurred in Ireland. So them statistics alone, which mean this shouldn't have happened to Ashling. I suppose the most frightening part of it is that the time of day that it happened, where it happened, as this is, she was only out for a run. It wasn't as she was out in a nice spot or anything else, which means it's happening broad daylight. And that's what has affected a lot of people that I was talking to on the other evening, that the time of day it happened and which means that where we know where the walk or where to go to, and we can't have that. Which means, and it's right that us, us local representatives make sure that we stand up and we shout out that violence against women is wrong. And I think that's something that we should make sure that's said loud and clear from this, from here today, that Sligo County Council, violence against women is wrong and we must put a stop to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Healy. Council Fox.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to concur what you have said, Chair, and to, along with my colleagues here on the council, it's such a tragic accident. It's, I offer my condolences to the Murphy family and to the students and her colleagues there in the school. It's just such a tragedy and I think that we should be clear that there should be a zero tolerance message, you know, it's a zero tolerance against violence against women. It's simply not acceptable. And it's just, it's not, it's not acceptable at all in the public. I too participated, yeah, in individual there. And it's, it's just so much anger from the public. It's something that we need to address as public representatives. And I certainly will be supporting any, any issues that we'll be working on. So thank you.
Thanks, Council Fox. Council Gilroy.
Thank you, Cahill. And you summed up really what we all are thinking and thank you for sharing that. I suppose I've been thinking a lot and I think we all have in talking with our families. And one of my daughters said to me, Dad, say nothing about it because you'll say the wrong thing, because it's so easy to say the wrong thing in these days. But what I might ask is that we remember the others that maybe didn't get vigils and things like that as well as Ashling. It was tragic. It was a cruel, cruel murder. We think of Justine Valdez, Anna Kriegel, even Melissa Mahon in her own area here. There's so many other women and there are just three names I just picked out of the back of my head. We're all, as some of the others said, we're all sons of women, we're all brothers of women, we're all, and we're all fathers. And the last week I became a grandfather and listening to that, listening of a little girl, listening to that talk about, about Ashling, I looked at her and I said, I hope when you go out into the world as a young adult woman, that it won't be like this and that you won't live in fear. And we all have a responsibility. And I think every one of us, as we know, is a sinner. And every one of us has hurt people in some way, be it thoughts, words or actions. And we've hurt men, we've hurt women in whatever we do, maybe not physically, but we all need to think about that. Also, councillor McSharry is having trouble getting in and asked that his name be added to those who support this motion. Thank you, Cahill.
Thanks, Council Gilroy. Council Queenan.
I, Cahill, I want to be associated with your comments and the comments of all my fellow, like the members. It's a sad day, a sad day for Ireland. And like was all, and appeared to it to the Murphy family and the teachers, staff and the pupils at the school. And I hope lessons will be learned from this.
Thank you, Council Queenan. Council Catherley.
Yeah, good morning. Apologies now, I just had a little bit of trouble logging in as well. So I actually missed the start of the contributions. But I can, from what I can gather, that everybody is in agreement that this is a tragic act. And I'd like to also send my sympathies to the family and the community of Ashling Murphy and to acknowledge, I suppose, the public's support on this as well. I think now is the time for change for us. I think the line is drawn in the sand finally. And I think we as public representatives have to lead out on this. We have to lead out within our homes. For us who are in education, we have to lead out in our schools and in society in general, that we have to say that this cannot be tolerated, that this behavior, unacceptable behavior against women cannot be tolerated. I know that there is legislation being introduced. It is, you know, they're talking about it for a long time. It's time now that this is introduced. There's no more time for any, we don't need any more reports. We have all the research, we know what's happening, but we have to introduce the legislation to stop this out once and for all. It's a societal change, but it can happen. I think it's still very important to get the message out there that Ireland is one of the safest countries in the world to live in as well. But I think we have to start at home, calling it out, saying that it's wrong and that it's unacceptable. And it will change and we as a society have to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Catherley. And Council Baker is having trouble getting in as well. He also wishes for his name to be added to this. And look, just finally, I'd like to say that on behalf of the council as well, just to show appreciation and say that we're proud of the people of this county for the support that they have shown over the last number of days to Ashling's family and indeed to all women who are experiencing acts of violence. I think we've all, we're all standing up to say it's not acceptable and it won't be accepted. And now, members, we'll move on with the floor. And number one on the floor, to note the minutes of the meeting of Sligo County Council Joint Policing Committee held on the twenty-sixth of March, twenty twenty-one, twenty-fifth of June, twenty twenty-one, twenty-fourth of September, twenty twenty-one. Council Gilroy, opposed. Council Healy, seconded. Two, to note the minutes of the meetings, the SPC four climate change held on the thirtieth of June, twenty twenty-one and the twenty-ninth of September, twenty twenty-one. Council Maguire. I'd second it. Three, to note the minutes of the meetings of the local travel accommodation on the twelfth of May, twenty twenty-one, fifteenth of September, twenty twenty-one. I oppose, Council Maguire. I'd second. Four, to note the meetings, the minutes of the meeting of the Crammori Generation Steering Group meeting held on the twenty-ninth of July, twenty twenty-one. Opposed, Council Bree, seconded, Council Maguire. Five, to confirm the minutes of the SCC Audit Committee meeting held on the fourteenth of September, twenty twenty-one.
Confirmed.
Okay, proposed, Council Bree, seconded, Council Mulvey. Six, to note the minutes of the meeting of SPC one Housing and Corporate held on the twenty-eighth of September, twenty twenty-one.
Proposed.
Seconded.
Council Gibbons.
Council Gibbons. Seven, to note the minutes of the meeting of Sligo Cliffe Municipal District held on the eleventh of October, twenty twenty-one. Proposed, Council Gilroy, seconded, Council Healy. Eight, to note the minutes of the Corporate Policy Group meeting held on the first December, twenty twenty-one.
Proposed.
Seconded.
Council Gibbons.
Council Gibbons. Seven, to note the minutes of the meeting of Sligo Cliffe Municipal District held on the eleventh of October, twenty twenty-one. Proposed, Council Gilroy, seconded, Council Healy. Eight, to note the minutes of the Corporate Policy Group meeting held on the first December, twenty twenty-one. Council O'Grady, seconded, Council Gilroy. And nine, to confirm the minutes of the ordinary meeting of Sligo County Council held on the sixth of December, twenty twenty-one.
Proposed.
Proposed, Council Queenan, seconded, Council Mulvey, I think. Ten, to note that the housing and corporate SPC has approved Ms Rosaline Lally of the Irish Wheelchair Association nomination to the Disability Consultant Committee to replace Mrs Gillian Merritt. Proposed, Council Bree.
Seconded, Council Walsh.
Seconded, Council Walsh. Eleven, to approve in accordance with section six of the Housing Act nineteen ninety-two and regulations, there under provision of assistance to two housing association in the form of capital assistance scheme in the value of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five euro for six apartments at number fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-five, sixty-six, block eight, Avina Ballastadere, town central Ballastadere, County Sligo. Poser. Council Maguire, seconded. I'd second it.
Cahill, look, just, I was looking to put my hand up there because, to be honest, there's a lot of the things in housing, I have to admit, I have trouble understanding some of the schemes and things like that. And I might ask that we might get maybe an explanation on how some of them work. Just, it's, these motions come in front of us and I have to say, I'm supporting things that I might not have a full understanding of and should have. So that might be taken on board, but appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. That's fine.
Can I just say that there's some feedback that Council Gilroy speaks, but I'm not sure if there is with this microphone.
It could be my microphone. Maybe we just won't be able to let you talk for the rest of the meeting. Twelve, to consider a report from SPC two on an all-Ireland strategic review consultation paper.
I'd like to propose that as Chair of that SPC. Sorry.
Proposed, Council Gilroy, seconded, Council Healy. And thirteen, to note the monthly management report for November twenty twenty-one. We take it as noted.
I propose.
Proposed, Council Bree, seconded, Council Queenan. And, members, with your permission, I've been asked by councillor Maloney to, could we take number thirty, motion number thirty? Council Maloney, want to take that motion now?
Yeah. Thanks very much, Cahill. Just very briefly, I put down this motion because I know at the December storm, there was an awful lot of power lines taken down by trees that were probably should have been cut if the, if ESB had the resources to cut them. And I want to compliment the ESB crews for coming out and working day and night and restoring power to so many people. But I asked my colleagues to support me in writing to the council, or write at the council, writing to the ESB, asking them to survey their lines and remove any trees that pose a threat if they have the resources to do so. Thanks, Cahill.
Can we agree that? Agreed? Okay, and so we'll go back to deferred motions and fourteen on the floor. Deferred again, Council Queenan, Council Clark. Fifteen, Council Clark. Are we seconded?
Sorry, Chair. Fifteen, I want to take that motion off the agenda because really I understand by the replies that we're not going to get a proper reply to it, not a standard reply from either the board or leader or indeed the council. So I'm flagging a dead horse here. So I think it's disrespectful to the eighteen members that we didn't get a proper feedback report. But I'm going to take it off because I'm not going to worry and waste my time any further.
Okay, Council Clark. Do you wish to remove it from the agenda? Or are you?
Yeah, I'm going to remove it from the agenda because it's a waste of time. We know we're not going to get the respect we deserve as members.
Okay. Just, just. Hold on now. If Council Clark is removing the motion from the agenda, then we don't, we don't debate it or speak on it?
No, that's all right. Well, it's just if he's not happy with it, we have representatives on the leaderboard. And if you're not happy with it, we'll raise it.
Okay.
We'll raise it. Yeah.
Okay, okay, well, you can, Council Clark, you can maybe follow up on that. Sixteen, Council Gibbons.
That motion I know has been seconded by my colleague, Thomas Healy, in relation to this, something that came up when I said I'd actually put the motion up in relation to it, right? All present here knows that insurance companies are engaging in price, gouging practice known as dual pricing, which they use to charge customers much higher prices than are actually the cost of their policies. It involves the use of complex models to identify customers who were likely to renew their change, or sorry, likely to renew and then change the hot to the higher price, possibly before they are tempted to switch to a competitor. Instead of renewing customers for their loyalty, the companies increase the customer's premium in the knowledge that he or she is more likely to renew than to switch. This is, this is the loyalty penalty. This is the crux of a whole lot of it. And it's going on the whole time. We have described the draft insurance legislation published by Minister Donoghue and Minister Fleming as an embarrassment and devoid of any substance. Minister Donoghue and Minister Fleming received agreement from the cabinet to commence drafting insurance legislation that will reduce insurance costs for customers by precisely zero cents. Minister Fleming claims that with a straight face that the bill will protect most risks and homeowners from dual pricing. This is nonsense. The government have done nothing to ban the loyalty penalty. The truth is that the Central Bank will inform of dual pricing after a complaint was issued by Sinn Féin in October, two thousand and nineteen. And the subsequent meeting was held with the governor of the Central Bank. This led to the Central Bank investigation into their practice and proposes to restrict, the restrict it will take effect from July of next year. All this legislation will do is ask the Central Bank to write a report at some time in two thousand and three, or two thousand and twenty-three. or 2023, eighteen months after the bill becomes law. Since February 2021, government have shamelessly blocked Sinn Féin's proposal legislation to ban dual pricing and reduce insurance costs for consumers. Separately, earlier this year, Minister Fleming said that the insurance companies would not be let off the hook for reducing business interruption compensation by the amount that the state support received by businesses. All this legislation will do is collect data on the deductions of state support paid to businesses for final claim settlements. Again, this will not bring about any financial benefits to businesses. If the minister can be accused of anything, it is false advertising. Their time will be better spent by sending their opposition to key pieces of insurance reform legislation introduced by Sinn Féin. The government continues to block Sinn Féin's judicial counsel amendment bill that would require insurance to disclose if and how much of the savings brought about by the personal injury guidelines have been passed on to the consumer. The government should focus on real reform and reduce insurance costs such as legislation to rebalance the duty of care. It is time for more action and less play acting by Minister Fleming. I'd ask you all to support the motion. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Constable Gibbons. Constable Healy, you seconded.
Yeah, I want to second that motion as well as that. Look, insurance affects us all, doesn't matter what business you're in, it affects communities, everything else, and the ministers need to step up to the mark and address this once ever again. And instead of these insurance companies taking money out of people's pockets, we want to see money going back into them and this needs to be looked at serious. We've raised it on a number of occasions in the dawn and I think it's most important now that it's raised here in this chamber and other chambers around the country to make sure that this is addressed once ever again. Thank you.
Is that agreed? Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. Seventeen, Constable Healy. Okay. Eighteen, Constable Gilroy.
Accept the report, thank you.
Hold on. I'll second it. Nineteen, Constable McSharry.
Thank you, Kehirlek.
I second.
Thanks, Constable O'Grady.
I think being dealt with, I think Constable Walsh might have had a similar type motion. But I think, again, Kehirlek, and especially in light of that terrible, terrible tragedy last week, and I know that from our discussions with the Students' Union, I think health and safety of students at night, and particularly young female students, and now that whole issue is back to the fore and it's something that we should continue to highlight. So street lighting in those particular areas is of a big concern to the student community, but also to the residents in the area. So again, and I think my colleague, Constable Walsh, dealt with this previously, but no harm to raise it again. Thank you, Kehirlek.
Constable O'Grady, do you want to come in there as a seconder?
Yes. Yes. Yes, Kehirlek, I think it has been on the agenda before, but I think it's very timely with what has happened during the week. And I have been in discussion with the Students' Union and like others, received an email from President Martin on the issues for students and indeed residents along that road. So I think it's important that something would be done to make it safer and special it up for the protection of all that live and all that go to college in that area. Thank you, Kehirlek.
I think that motion is agreed. Yes. Motion twenty, Constable Healy. Jesus, you're a fucking no way like freak today. Will you defer them on, no? I doubt it. Okay, twenty-one, Constable Gibbons. I know that. Seconder for Constable Gibbons.
Constable Gibbons is being seconded by Thomas Healy. This is a motion that I've brought up before and I've had a talk with, I've seen the report from it, and I've also had consultation with one or two of the executive in relation to it. So I've moved the motion as it is, I'm not going to speak on it, we've done this in the past, but I'm hoping to get word on this very shortly, within the next month or two. So I, as the man says, there's no sense in spending a lot of time on this, so I'll just leave the motion as it is.
Thank you, Constable Gibbons. Constable Healy, you happy?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, motions now, twenty-two, and Constable Gilroy is seconded by, seconded by Constable Walsh. Constable Gilroy.
Look, thanks for the report on that. As the motion says, it's a longstanding difficulty in obtaining land by agreement and this has always been an issue. A lot of work has been done in the last couple of years, a lot of land has been walked, a lot of officials, I've done it myself and I'm sure other councillors have as well, even one of my council colleagues and myself had a meeting with the landowner in a pub during the lockdown. There was no drink being served, it was only a cup of tea we got, it was only like a house. But it was so important to get this issue done, we worked, we're working round the clock to try and get this done. The officials under Tom Cillfathair have been working very hard, we've been many years waiting for this, it's over twenty years, I suppose, that they're looking for burial grounds. In a Hamlish, about thirteen years ago, we took to the process of burying people in the pathways. Now it's time to move on. We need a report to come to the March meeting, basically highlighting the available options and what is it, why the other weeks have been excluded and what is the best options. And if agreement can't be reached, it's now is telling, we just have to move on with it. I'd like to pay, as I say, to the officials, I know Declan Noon and Damien Henry have walked lands with me in both places, or Declan didn't put on as well, he's one day and met with Cowsdung, which is not a nice thing for anyone to get on their shoe. And I want to pay a particular tribute to Emmercan Cannon, who has gone out and met with numerous landowners over the last while to try and get agreement when it's very, very hard to do so. So I'll ask for everybody's support on this. We're not naming anyone, we're not saying where it is, it's up to the officials to come back to us and say what is the best option for Sligo, for a Hamlish and for Ross's Point. And when the officials say that, I hope we get all your support for the officials to do their job and get the compulsory purchase order if needed. I hope it's not needed, I hope agreement can be reached, but the time is running out and it needs to be done in the next couple of months and thank you.
Constable Walsh, you seconded the motion.
Yeah, I'd be brief, Kehirlek, I just want to support everything Constable Gilroy has said. It is unfortunate, I suppose, that we do, it looks like we have to go down this route, but as elected representatives, we have a duty of care to the wider public. I've been at many meetings across this point and at a Hamlish with many members of the community, but there is a line, there is a boundary and we have to take the greater good and the greater need into account. We have a duty of care to the wider public and we're running out of burial space. And again, I want to thank Tom Cillfathair, Emmercan Cannon and the officials on the work they've done so far. It has come to the time that we move this on. Thanks, Kehirlek.
Okay, motion is agreed. Yes, Constable Catherine Lee, motion twenty-three.
Yeah, I just had my hand up just to speak briefly.
I'm sorry, sorry. Yeah, you can come in if you like, I'm sorry.
Just to support the motion as well, I know it's something that's been on the agenda for a long time and any positive, anything that moves this on is necessary. It is a pity that, I know that people don't want to go down the compulsory purchase order route, but if that's what it takes at this stage, after years and years of looking for a suitable location, then so be it. We'd just like to support the motion, thank you.
Okay, and twenty-three, just on that.
Just, I sent in an email to the executives as well in relation to land that was down, that was passed here on the council, land down in Grange that was for sale, and we were assured that they were talking with the landowner. I've sent back emails requesting a report on it, I have not received it to date, so I hope that that will be included in Constable Gilroy's report. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thanks, Constable Healy. Constable Catherine now, motion twenty-three.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, Ms Whelan. It's positive. Limerick City and Council were the first local authority in Ireland to begin using the Space Finder service, which has been developed by local firm Park Magic, and this is actually supported by the Disabled Drivers Association of Ireland. So the app can pinpoint vacant accessible spaces and the council's traffic department actually installs small centres at accessible parking bays in its city centre business district. And this information provides real time updates on the Space Finder and Limerick e-parking apps about whether or not it is available. So for the first time ever, the system will enable local authorities to collect real time information on accessible bay usage and turnover, and such data is key in planning the provision and location of accessible spaces in the future. So again, I'd like to welcome the report that states that you will be engaging, the Sligo County Council Parking Management and Engineering Staff will be engaging with Limerick City and County Council. And I do know that, as you said, and I agree, other matters to be considered will include public procurement obligations and interoperability with existing systems from parking management. I do know, I understand that it's not just something that you can just automatically install overnight, but I think that, I think it would be very, very beneficial for, well, obviously for disabled drivers, but for everybody. And we have lots of parking spaces, disabled parking spaces now, particularly in the city centre. And I was actually at an event there the other day that was organised by the Irish Wheelchair Association, which is called Back in Five, very, very effective event, I suppose, just outlining the importance of not taking up a parking space or saying, I'll be back in two minutes, I'm just going out to the shop, I'm just nipping in for a coffee. That, it might seem like something very small to us, but when somebody is coming around looking for a disabled space and they cannot get it because somebody who has just parked in it for less than five minutes. So it's a good awareness campaign and I think that this will complement all the different campaigns and the also the Take My Space, Take My Disability campaign that we've been working on over the years at the council and also Make Way Day as well. So I think that this just would complement all the work that's been done already by the organisations. Thank you for your support.
Constable Maguire, you seconded the motion.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is a really timely and appropriate motion. I think Marie has covered all of the other aspects that relate to this particular motion. I think it's really important that we spread the word in relation to disability parking and how important it is for somebody who has a disability that they really need those spaces and it completely impacts their possible journey to town and getting to town and doing what they need to get done. So I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thanks, Constable Maguire. Constable Gibbons.
Kehirlek, I'd have to agree a hundred percent with the motion, I think myself that it's very well timed, we live in electronic age and I think we should be using that for the benefit of everybody and people with disabilities, it is a need for. But the one thing that I felt that I bring up here this morning on the back of that motion, and it's maybe just awareness and it's maybe something that Sligo County Council may take on board or that may collaborate with the Irish Wheelchair Association. A lot of the spaces that's in Sligo is being abused by able-bodied people, that's a fact. But there is a lot of spaces as well in Sligo that's been used by people who have a disability but have some mobility, but do not realise that that parking disc that they have, where they don't have difficulty getting in and out of their car, can be used in an ordinary parking space. And I think that we need to be able to educate or notice, it needs to be put on a notice board or whatever else is just, if you have some mobility, leave the parking space to those that have no mobility. Because this is an overall problem and I do know, because I've approached a number of people, even in the past, I said, look, at the end of the day, you have a certain amount of mobility, don't be taking the space on those that hasn't got it. But they felt themselves that they had to park in a disabled parking bay because they had a disc. They don't. That disc will also do them in an ordinary public parking space, but we need to get that message out there because it's something that a lot of people, just through ignorance, is not aware of. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Constable Gibbons. Motion agreed? Agreed. Twenty-four, Constable Healy, seconded.
Constable Gibbons.
Yeah, thanks very much. I suppose the strategy of an All-Ireland Rail Review is most welcome from Minister Ryan and also from Nicola Mallon, the M L A. The most important thing about this is this is the first opportunity we have to sound out exactly what sort of travel we want here in Sligo. The Dublin-Sligo rail, I spoke with all the chairs in Donegal, Leitrim, Roscommon, Longford, Galway, Meo and yourself, Marierick. I sent an email to outline exactly about the review and the importance of it, what we can achieve from it and what we need to achieve from it, especially here where we are in Sligo and the western area. I highlighted the fact that if you take the Sligo to Dublin train, we need a faster train, we also need a loop service coming from Longford down to Sligo, and we also might need to see the opening of the Ballasteadyre train station to have that loop. We also need to be electrified, we looked at ways, talking to the other chairs as well, security on the trains needs to be improved, more trains coming down and up, loops have to be put into areas. But another area we looked at, in 2009, they did away with the freight train service from Sligo to Dublin. We're looking for that to be reinstated. I think we have an opportunity there where we have no trains running at night, where we could be using that service. And this will also help with our low carbon emissions and that's an important part of it as well. One of the things we talked about as well, we looked at the western corridor and the importance of that. And I suppose at our S P C's meetings there, the last day, we asked before Christmas that we'd have an S P C on it and we got good information of that and the S P C group also have put forward a submission towards this. But we looked at the western corridor and what that can happen and what that can bring to us if it's opened. If the western corridor is open, our nearest neighbours now at present in the EU is France and Rossleigh is the closest harbour to us, but we also have an international airport there in Knock where we could be tied into that. We could, Sligo could open itself up to over 500 million people and that's getting into Europe. So we have an opportunity here, there's four stages, or three stages in, from Attenwright to Claremore, Claremore to Charleston and then Charleston to Calounie. So there's three stages of that line. Talking with the chairs in Meo and Galway, they're fully supportive of a railway line running on that, on the western corridor again. And I think that with this review, it's an opportunity for us to have our say. Sligo has a lot to gain from this and nothing to lose. We could be sitting right in the middle of something that's big, opening up our towns, linking ourselves in with Galway, the nearest city to us, that's what we have, and then on to Derry. So there's an opportunity here for us and I think that we as local representatives and especially as Sligo County Council, we have an opportunity to grab this with both hands. I have also got a commitment from all the chairs that once this review is over, that we're going to look for a meeting with the Minister of Transport regarding this and see exactly what we can achieve. Because we don't want a review, the last review was done was back in, the last review of an All-Ireland review was done was in 1906. We don't want to wait that long again. As it says, here we have two governments that have come together to unite the country and unite the rail, and I think this is an opportunity for us as well and Sligo can't be seen sitting back on this. So I'm hoping, well, it's no hope, we need to make sure that we're being heard and we need to make sure that we put in a submission into this and highlight the fact of what we need here in Syria. Thank you.
Thanks, Constable Healy. Constable Gibbons, do you want to come in a second or, sorry, Constable?
Indeed. No, I'd have to support everything that Constable Healy says, and in particular the loop rail from between Longford back as far as Ballasteadyre. The other aspect that he hit there and it's very important, and I feel myself it's going to play a major role within Sligo at the heart and if the possibility is that we're to get city status, we need the likes of the infrastructures. We've already lost the airport in Strandhill, we've lost the freight service coming into Sligo there through the rail. I think myself that that needs to be opened again, there is nothing stopping the freight from opening up. We've seen a situation in England and we actually seen it in some parts of Ireland where we ran short on truck drivers on the whole agenda here. I mean to say, the rail offers an alternative, it offers an environmental healthier alternative by moving stuff via rail. And as well as that, I would love And as well as that, I would love to see is the Western Rail Corridor reopened and especially even if it was back as far as Attenwright, because it opens up all that direction back there to Sligo, which we have, it's given an alternative. We have people getting treatment in Galway Hospital during normal times for cancer treatment and whatever else. All they can rely on at the moment is the bus service that goes down. It gives an alternative, it gives an alternative that we're able to use the train if we got that up and running again. It leaves it as well to Sligo IT and especially as a university status, that is why it opened to a bigger community out there. And I would 100% support the motion and I'd ask you to support it.
Councillor Bree, I just asked to bear in mind, we did agree a submission at 12 on the agenda anyway. So councillor. Councillor Bree.
Just, I wish to support the motion and as you say, I welcome the submission for the All-Ireland Rail Review Strategy, which has been produced by our Strategic Policy Committee on Environment and Infrastructure, which as you point out, we adopted earlier this morning. The rail review is clearly an important north-south initiative and I believe we should acknowledge the work carried out to date on the strategy by Transport Minister Eamonn Ryan and the Northern Infrastructure Minister Nicola Mallon. The review was designed to consider how and where rail should be improved on the island to boost sustainable connectivity and address regional imbalance. The process has now reached the consultation stage with organisations and individuals being asked to submit their views. And I believe it's important, Cahiric, that we let them know, we need faster and more frequent trains in the Sligo-Dublin line, we need an early morning and evening commuter service linking Sligo with Longford. And of significant importance, we need to see the reopening of the Western Rail Corridor linking Sligo with Galway and Limerick and hopefully at some stage a line linking us with Derry. The reopening of the Sligo to Galway Western Rail Corridor is already included as a key objective in the North West Regional Spatial and Economic Strategy because it's clearly recognised as of significant importance for the entire west of Ireland. So I support the motion and I particularly welcome the fact that we have unanimously adopted the submission to be submitted to the, for this consultation process.
Councillor Clark.
Cahiric, thank you for letting me in there. I also want to support the motion and agree with it and as councillor Healy has said that it's a very historic motion, a review of the entire All-Ireland strategy in relation to the rail. And really I wanted to speak on item 12 because I want to commend Michael Feeney, Mr Callan and indeed the chair of the SBC, councillor Dilroy, who put enormous work into the submission, which is very well done and I think all members would say that it covers all aspects of the requirement of any substantial submission and indeed here in Sligo where we're based and it would make such a huge difference to us. And of course, we don't want to create any confusion. I think it's built into our development plan that until such time as a rail is financed from Galway to Sligo, that we're supporting the proposal to put in a greenway to secure the line for such a time. I think we're all agreed on that. But when the time comes and the funding comes to put the rail back there, we'll be all supporting that as well. Thanks, Cahiric.
Thanks councillor Clark. Councillor McSharry.
Thank you, Cahiric. And in fairness, I think councillor Clark touched on my submission. I think we'd all would support any upgrade between Sligo and Dublin, Sligo and Longford. Personally, myself, and I think going back when the country was very solvent and there was a lot of money for transport, the rail was somewhat shelved. I don't see any major progress on the Western Rail Corridor initiative. That's my own view. I think we have to support and look at the tourism side of the greenways, the success of the greenways, the success of cycling holidays and greenway activity abroad and how we can incorporate that into our own economy. And that is why I would in theory support the motion. However, I would introduce one caveat. I wouldn't like to see anything that would counteract the sterling work done by anybody who's involved in the greenway initiatives. And I do think that would be retrograde and counteractive. With that said, and I think councillor Clark, I suppose, has summed up my conclusion that we have to look at all, look at all options. But I think we should exclusively focus as a country on the greenway initiatives in terms of the tourism objective and in terms of the positive aspects of that. And I know this was an issue that had been discussed when I first came on the council in 2014 and councillor Mulvey, as I look at the various faces here and greenway initiatives where we had people from the rail and greenway. But I would, and I just don't see it happening because when we were financially solvent with funding for railway, it wasn't an option. I don't see it coming back and I would hopefully like to see a priority on the greenways. Thank you, Cahiric.
Members, listen, just thank you councillor McSharry. We had much debate on this at the last meeting as well. And I think, look, we are all in agreement, we're in agreement that we're making a submission to the All-Ireland Strategic Rail Review. We're also in agreement that, you know, and councillor Clark, you summed it up, until such a time that that's, that we see that happening, that we're, you know, we're supporting a greenway as well, that came from this council as well. So we're not going to debate that again today. So anybody that wants to speak on the motion that's in front of us, that's fine. I think we've clearly indicated what our intentions are as a council and I think that that should be fair enough. Now councillor Connolly, you've indicated to come in and councillor Catherley. Councillor Connolly? Councillor Connolly, do you want to come in? He's frozen. Right, in the meantime, that's the only one that has indicated now. Councillor Mulvey, do you want to come in?
Yeah, look, thanks, Cahiric. I think councillor Catherley was in in front of me. I let her in. She had her hand up before me.
Sorry councillor Catherley.
Thank you. Again, the first part of the motion, I certainly agree with because as somebody who's travelling on that train weekly now to Dublin, it really doesn't make sense that it's quicker to drive or it's almost quicker to drive than to take the train. The train is definitely, it's too slow. There really needs to be investment put in in the new track, in new carriages. It's a very, very busy train from early morning till late evening throughout the week. It is, it's very popular, it's a great service, but it does need to be made faster. So I agree with that. I have to just comment on the, and it's not going to open up any kind of debate, but just to comment on the second part of it is that the part about the Western Rail Corridor and all that, I think it's causing confusion because just to reiterate that the work is going ahead in Sligo, it's in the county development plan and it's, the work is being carried out by consultants. We said that before and I just think it's important that there is no confusion there. You know, any time that it's, you know, that both projects are mentioned, that this, the project from Calouni to Belahi, it's working away, there's actually a fantastic, a fantastic campaign group now, the Calouni Greenway Group. They have, they have an average reach of about 9,000 people. There's 65 businesses have now received letters, there's huge support in the entire county for this and particularly in the Calouni area because as you, from the last time, it's actually going to be, the Calouni is going to be the centre point for the ending of the Esselainseur and the Calouni to Belahi Greenway as well. So just to make that point, I know I see you're shaking your head there, the chair, but at the same.
No, 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 you're entitled, look, you're absolutely entitled to make the point on it.
I just want to make it clear that there's no confusion that.
There's no confusion, it is clear, there's no.
Yeah, and maybe in 20 or 30 years, whenever the money is made available, but it's very, very important that this line is made.
There's no confusion councillor Catherley, you're entitled to make your point, but there is no confusion about the direction that we are taking as a council. Councillor Connolly, you asked.
Chair, there's no confusion because an hour ago, we've unanimously adopted a report and a submission in favour of the Western Rail Corridor. So there is no confusion. Let the word go out that Sligo County Council is unanimously supportive of the Western Rail Corridor. We voted unanimously on it.
We're supporting a submission to the Irish Rail, to the strategic, All-Ireland Strategic Rail Review. That's what this council is doing, based on SPC two, the submission that SPC two have put in front of us.
That is correct.
So.
No confusion.
And, but there has to be no confusion as well to come from this council, that we are also supporting the greenway.
Yes, adjacent to the rail line.
That's adjacent, what is in the development plan councillor Bree.
That's true.
That's, there to be no confusion about that.
No confusion.
So no confusion about either. We're not going to open up that debate here today.
It's no confusion. The motion is, as it says, it's a strategy about railway systems and that's what we're talking about. It's not about greenways, motorways, rightways, wrongways, it's about what's in front of us. It's a strategy and we have a duty to make sure that we make sure that we're seeing it. And as it says, the SPC's passed it, this motion has to be passed as well. Thank you.
Councillor Gilroy.
Thanks very much. I feel for you chairman. I chaired the SBC meeting the other day and it was very hard to keep the agenda on rail and rail only. And I do, I do feel people's passion for all the issues. In saying that, what I think is more important is that there's a range of stakeholders will be consulted in the next phase. Several government departments, the regional assemblies, local government representatives, representatives from the seven major cities across the island of Ireland and the public rail providers. We are being excluded as a council, as is Leitrim, as is Mayo, as is Galway County, as is Donegal. And for that reason, and Longford, for that reason, I think it would be important that maybe we should look, that as a group of councils, we look to be included in the stakeholders. I only became aware of this over the last few days and I think that would be important. Finally councillor Clark, kind of stole my thunder to thank Michael Feeney and Eamonn for the hard work they put into that. People have said things about public servants in the past, watching mock sets, I can tell you at 11 o'clock on Thursday night, Eamonn was circulating emails to me and in no shape been talking to Michael in a short time. So I want to pay tribute to them and the work that they've done and to thank them very much for what they've done in that. But I think we should ask to become a stakeholder because stakeholders will be consulted at the next stage in this process. Thank you very much.
Okay, I see councillor Walsh has hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Cahiric. And it appears when something like this is listed on the agenda, it becomes a debate. But I want to echo everything councillor Clark has said, you know, until such time as there is money for that particular rail of 250 million plus, then the greenway project, as stated, will be advanced in our county development plan and is being funded by government and it has been committed to by government. And I look forward to that progressing in the very near future. Again, I want to thank the Sligo Greenway Group and Jude and the team and Calouni Greenway Group. And I want to agree with what councillor Healy has said relative to the Sligo Dublin line. And something that I hope can be addressed in the very short term future is the security on that line. It is unfortunate that it is being used to carry illicit substances on the line. I think they are fully aware of it and that is something that should be addressed as soon as possible.
Thank you councillor Walsh. Is that everybody? Councillor Mulvey, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Cahiric. Yeah, look, I just, and I won't tie up, and in fairness, I know you're trying to move the meeting on, but just to concur and support what was councillor Walsh has taken some of the points I wanted to say in support of what councillor Clark has been saying, this, I also would agree that, you know, this can be seen in certain lights as a bit contentious, but I certainly with the first half of that motion, I would have no disagreement whatsoever in that it's something I called for before was extra trains on that line and more times to suit people coming down from the Dublin line. But I also, you know, would support what you've said and I want to thank you for the clarification on that, that this motion will have no impending obstruction to the work that, the good work that has been going on and will continue to go on, on the possibility of reopening a greenway along a disused line. And as I said at last month's meeting, it's something I have for over 40 years seen abandoned, nothing happened, you know. And the whole way from Calouni, Kellany, Monabraina, Tuba Curry, Connery, all up there, those people, there's a huge ground swell from people to see a piece of infrastructure opened and used as a tourism potential. And I think as councillor Walsh said, the figure of 250 million, that's before steel prices went up in excess of over 200%. You know, so a figure of that could possibly be doubled or trebled, you know. So we have to look realistically at what potential a disused section of line can have and can be best served to the tourism potential of Sligo. And I think that's all the bringing up. Thank you.
Good man. Okay, okay. Can we agree the motion? You can, if it's one or two or if it's big spiel, if it's big spiel and it's going to cause an awful lot more again.
No, first of all, I want to thank the councillors. It's important that every councillor has their say in it and that's the most important thing and that's what it's all about. Just to say, in that strategy of the railway line, Sligo was only mentioned once in it. And it's not too long ago, folks, that we were all here in the chamber when they were trying to close down the Sligo to Dublin line. And we could be sitting here today looking for the reopening of the Sligo to Dublin line as well as the Western Corridor. So it's important we think of them things because, I mean, them things, them days go coming in. And at that time, when they were closing the Sligo Dublin line, it was down to money. But we were the first ones that was going to be, was going to be, the government had decided to close our line. That happened in Dublin or anywhere else. So this is why we're here, that's why we were elected by the people to make sure we breathe the best air and the best way for everyone. So I want to thank you for your support and as it says, it's exactly what it says, it's a strategy of All-Ireland Rail Review. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Healy. Just, C just wants to come in just for a quick moment, that's.
Yeah, just to clarify something, I don't know, in fairness to the other local authorities who will have time this week, asking them to do a joint submission on the Western Rail Corridor as part of the Strategic Rail Review, since this has to be in five o'clock on Friday. I do take councillor Gilroy's point though, that we could write to them about the involvement as stakeholders in that Phase One and get clarification in relation to that issue. It's just that when the notice motion goes through as written, I don't think we can deliver on that element in fairness to our colleagues in other local authorities as well as ourselves. But we will be putting in obviously the submission as notice motion 12 on your behalf.
Just want to note, which is CEO, I did raise this with you back in November and make it sounds that we would never get this round to all them. So that's why I took it upon myself to write to all the chairs in all the areas. And I also took it on myself to send them an email in relation to the motion that would be coming down. And I also asked them that they would push ahead and put down their own submissions in between. The reason I wanted to make sure that Longford, Leitrim, Roscommon, Donegal, Sligo was all included in it, as councillor Gilroy says, when the review was over, we're not going to even be considered. But we, what we will be doing is, we will be looking for a meeting with the minister on the review, on our review and our concerns of the Dublin-Sligo rail and also the Western Corridor. So I'm hoping that this will all work out. Thank you.
Again, though, for clarification, in the week that's in it, we are not going to get the other local authorities to agree to a joint submission because their council meetings will run at different times. What I would suggest is councillor Gilroy's request as part of the notice motion that we do write to these other local authorities about being discussed as part of Phase One of the rail review. And that then brings us into working with those local authorities around what you're looking for as members.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, if that needs to be formally proposed, I formally propose that, minor amendment. Thank you, thank you, C. Councillor Catherley, motion 25.
Thank you. This is a very important motion and I actually. Uh, this is a very important, uh, motion and I actually was speaking to one of the mums over the weekend who, um, who has, who has a child who is, who is waiting for intervention. So just to go back on this again, because it's very important that there are eighty-two children with spina bifida and/or hydrocephalus currently requiring urgent orthopedic intervention. This was brought to the attention of Minister of, uh, for Health, Stephen Donnelly in December twenty twenty. However, no action has been instigated by the minister to resolve this matter and these children continue to deteriorate. Lack of surgical intervention has caused their limbs and bodies to become deformed and maimed. Some of these children's legs are so badly affected that the soles of their feet permanently rub together, causing open sores and bleeding. Children who have the ability to walk are losing or have lost that ability due to the absence of timely surgical management. Others who have manual wheelchairs due to the same issue are unable to self-propel themselves effectively, leaving them immobile. The lack of timely surgical intervention means that effectively these children end up requiring more complex surgeries and failing that amputation of limbs. So I'm calling on Sligo County Council to write to Minister, um, Stephen Donnelly again to fast track these children for surgical review as a matter of urgency. And we're also calling on the Minister for Health to ensure the provision of services is made to disabled children within elective hospital settings as well as acute hospital settings to avoid a repeat of this situation. And I'm also asking my fellow councillors who are in government, um, to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Catherley. Is the motion agreed? Agreed? Okay, motion twenty-six, councillor Walsh.
Sorry, Kehirlock.
Sorry councillor Grady, I, 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 my apologies.
Just to be brief, I fully support, uh, this motion. It has been an ongoing issue, uh, for many years and time is of an essence, uh, for the provision of care for those children. And it's, it's difficult enough to have a child with disability, but those parents seem to have to fight for everything for those children. Now, my main concern or one of my concerns, no matter what Stephen Donnelly does, the lack of trained orthopedic nurses is a huge issue at the moment. And I know where there's theatres closed because of lack of, uh, specifically trained orthopedic, uh, nurses. But I fully support this motion. I think it's important that councillor Catherley, that she has raised it, that she keeps it on, on the table because it is a huge issue for the unfortunate children and their parents who's in a continual battle to get the right of care for them. Thank you, Kehirlock.
Yeah, thank you councillor Grady. Okay, the motion is agreed. Okay, twenty-six councillor Walsh can have a second or?
I second that.
Councillor Grady.
Thanks, Kehirlock, and, uh, this is an ongoing saga in relation to the cat lab in Sligo. This national review of cardiac services commenced in January twenty eighteen. Um, and it's time that the report has been published. As far back as two thousand and two, Sligo was recommended to be, uh, a regional centre, uh, for a cat lab, um, to cover the North West, uh, from Mayo, as, uh, up as far as Donegal. It was recommended as far back as two thousand and two, uh, in a report that we should have four to five regional cardiac centres across the country. Currently at Sligo, we have a mobile cat lab that visits the hospital two days a week. Uh, and we're not looking, uh, for the best healthcare, uh, in the world, even though we should be. We're looking for a quality, uh, safe service. That's all we're looking for at Sligo. We have a mobile cat lab that's effectively, uh, a transformed haulage lorry that pulls up at the hospital that comes from the UK two days per week. It's simply not good enough. Uh, Professor Chair, Professor Philip Nolan began this, uh, review of cardiac services to have visited Sligo. They've visited Beaumont, they've visited Tallaght, uh, they've been to Belfast and they've been to Glasgow. They have completed, uh, the evidence-based synopsis, uh, across the country. And we now need to know when the report will be published, when it will be made public and what, what those recommendations are. And if we will have the provision of a cat lab, which I believe we should have in Sligo. A cat lab in Sligo will, will result in two thousand patients not having to travel to St James's Hospital in Dublin or University College Hospital in Galway, uh, for safe cardiac procedures. Um, we're only looking for, um, a localized, quality, evidence-based cardiac service in Sligo. Um, and we, we have the geographical population. It's a money-saving exercise, uh, as most members, uh, know, they would have been at many meetings with Dr Murray in the past, who have, who have championed, uh, this campaign for many, many years. The minister has written to me, as you will see, in December twenty twenty-one, uh, relative to COVID holding up the review. Uh, but he said in December twenty twenty-one that, um, the report is very near complete and that it should be very clear when it can be published. So I'm asking us to write to all concerned, the department, uh, the HSE, the minister's office, uh, and Sealta on when this, uh, report will be made public to the people of Sligo. Thanks, Kehirlock.
Thanks councillor Walsh. Councillor Grady.
Uh, thank you, Kehirlock, and, uh, this is a very important motion. It's something that has been on the table for many years, councillor Sean McManus and myself from time to time. And indeed councillor Bree raised it on many occasions over the years. As councillor Walsh has said, in two thousand and two, it was recommended that Sligo would have a cardiac, uh, cat lab. But as we know, this hasn't happened. I feel the COVID, the, it's certainly the review that has been done, it's timely that it should be, uh, public now and should be completed. And I think the COVID is more of kicking the can down the road, um, and not making a decision on the service. I would disagree with councillor Walsh in one thing. Uh, he said, we're not, we're looking for a service. Uh, and I, we're looking for a service, but we, we, we want a top-end service. Uh, we want the best for the people of our area, as I know councillor Walsh does. But it's important that we get a quality service, uh, for our people. And it's so important that people can have the use of a cat lab, uh, which is, uh, after somebody has a coronary, the first hour is so important and to have a cat lab on site, uh, is hugely important, uh, for the ongoing health of the person involved. So I think it's important that this is kept on the table and that we do write to the minister seeking that this report, uh, is forthcoming and, uh, that things move on. Enough of kicking the can down the road by all that has been involved, has been done. Thank you, Kehirlock.
Thank you councillor Catherley.
Thank you. I'll be brief, just like to support the motion. I did have it on the agenda as well, um, last year. And, um, I, I just think it's important that this is kept on the agenda, um, because it's, it's far too important to be left for another twelve months and then asking again. So I know that other councillors have raised it over the years, but we really need to, to make this a top priority for Sligo. Thank you.
That's councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Kehirlock. Yes, I too have had a motion on this, I think maybe two years ago. So it's disappointing that it's, um, such a long-running matter that we haven't been able to resolve. And I just want to echo what's been said already, um, that it is a very important service that's needed for this, um, part of the country and hopefully, uh, some pressure can be brought to bear and it can be resolved sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gilroy.
Um, just to agree fully with the motion and, um, I think between myself, councillor Bree and councillor Mulvey, we will keep it on the Regional Health Forum agenda as well. Uh, I think we've all brought it up at different times. Um, I think mine might have been the, the most recent one, but I stand to be corrected on that. But we will bring that and the previous motion, just to say, I said I'd wait until the two of them were, were read out. But between the three of us, we'll agree to make sure that it's brought to the HSE, so, Region Forum.
Thanks councillor, and I think we'll all support the motion, absolutely. Um, no, I think she was in, no. Okay, the motion is agreed. Uh, twenty-seven councillor Clark.
Thanks, Kehirlock, for giving me the lead in this one. Um, look, Kealan Killenachal, um, achieved what very little, few people can do i- in life. To recover from a broken nick and two broken vertebrae in his brach and to achieve a gold medal in, in, in European competition is really outstanding. And is on par with what Moone McSherry has achieved for us here in Sligo. And I think it's right and fitting that we would follow on and offer Kealan, uh, uh, a civic reception. I, I think that, you know, we all here, we, we, on the big day, we're all there to support these athletics and, and these people that take part. But it's a huge co- financial cost to the families of those athletes to achieve what they achieve and, and get very little support from government or, or need from anyone else. So us as the local authority should acknowledge this achievement, uh, uh, and, and, and that. So I'd like to propose, formally propose it and, and thank you chair.
Councillor Queen, yes. Your mic. Mic, put on your mic.
There's a number of civic receptions to, to do. Are you going to try and get them done before you leave office, Kehirlock?
Absolutely, if, if, if what COVID and restrictions allow, without doubt. Um, just on, 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 on all the achievements and the people that have, have, have achieved so much over the past year and number of years and that we haven't been able to afford them, the, the credit that they deserve. Um, we certainly will try and do everything we can over the next, I will try and do everything I can in, in my time in office and over the next six months to, to, to afford them, um, what they're, the credit that they, they deserve. Um, in norm, the normal procedure is for it to go to, to the Procedures Committee. Um, so I think we will discuss it at the Procedures Committee, but I think, I, I, I think we'd be, we'd be agreeing the motion today. Councillor Gilroy.
Yeah, just to, to thank you for that and, um, possibly to maybe even look at as the weather improves, maybe do an outdoor event or something with her. I, I, I just don't know how, because the challenges keep coming at us. Um, and obviously I, I spoke to, to Kealan's father, I did some work for him recently and the pride, um, the pride of the whole community and, and of his family is, is palpable. And it just shows that it's, it's not just Grange that can produce a great athlete.
Absolutely. Uh, listen, that's, we, look, we, we do know what we need to do. Councillor Mulvey, you want to come in and councillor Catherley, councillor Mulvey?
Just, and thanks, Kehirlock. And it's just like, I, I was delighted to be associated with that notice of motion, um, for appeal and a look at. Somebody on that is, is a young inspirational, um, young man and it's testament to, you know, they can do spirit.
Somebody not muted, sorry. Is there somebody not muted there? Now, councillor Mulvey, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thanks, and just to be, I'm delighted to be associated with that notice of motion and it's a credit to, uh, our county and to Drummer West and to the Irland family on the great success of this inspirational young man. And we have to say, you know, the can-do spirit of someone that has come back from energy, uh, from injury, sorry, and to perform like this. And I think in a time when young people especially are in uncertain times and going through turbulent times that we never experienced growing up, he's a great inspiration to, to all the young people out there and his can-do attitude certainly, I'm delighted to be associated. And I know, you know, it's very hard for you as Kehirlock to, to, to do, um, civic reception, but I know certainly whatever, um, where you feel we can, we can, um, give these, uh, people who inspire our county, inspire us all, uh, gratitude, we certainly will go, go with that. And thanks, Kehirlock.
Councillor Catherley.
Um, thank you. Thanks, Chair, for letting me in and I'd just like to support the motion. It's an absolutely heroic achievement when you hear what, what that, that young lad, um, had to go through and what he was told at the very start that, that he might never walk again, um, to go and achieve a gold medal at this standard nationally, it's unbelievable. So, and I'd just like to also congratulate his coach, Emma Dunleavy, and also his teammates, absolutely fantastic. And they've brought such pride to, to Sligo and, and to the whole country. Thank you.
Okay, thanks councillor Catherley. I think we've agreed the motion. I, I, I would also like to just say that, that our young athletes have been a breath of fresh air, um, during this pandemic. And certainly the achievements of, of, you know, this young man after all he's went through have been incredible. Okay, we'll, we'll agree the motion and councillor Queen and from what you said, we, we, we will absolutely do everything we can. myself and Kevin have discussed it, we'll discuss it at the Procedures Committee and we'll try and have as many, um, as we can before the, the middle of the year. Yes. Councillor Catherley, twenty-eight.
I'll second that.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm calling on the HSE and the Department of Health to end the practice of pursuing cancer patients with private commercial debt collection agencies and to review exemptions to the inpatient charge by the Department of Health. Um, the average cost to someone dealing with cancer is seven hundred and fifty-six euro a month. It can rise to, uh, over one thousand. In some cases, the costs include wigs, medication, car parking, counselling, plus many more items that are needed when you have cancer. There are also government charges such as inpatient fees, prescription charges and medication not covered by the drug payment scheme. And these all contribute to the volley of costs being borne by people with cancer. So at the same time, people are faced with a loss of income of possibly fifteen hundred a month on average. This can result in having, them having to leave their job, take reduced hours, close their business or take significant time off work. So without a medical card or health insurance, health insurance, you must pay eighty euro for each chemotherapy or radiotherapy session up to a maximum of eight hundred a year. So the fact that local hospitals as a means of enforcing HSE regulations on the collection of charges and the legislation on hospital charges have contracted, um, commercial debt collecting agencies, uh, who are calling on people at what can be the very low point of their lives to seek payment for basic cancer treatment. So I really think that this is something that, that has to be reviewed very, very urgently. It's causing huge worry and upset and concern to so many people who are struggling in so many different ways that then that they, they're contacted by these private debt collection agencies looking for money. There has to be another way to work this out that is more understanding and that is more compassionate. And, and that's more timely than to, 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 to ensure that the patients can just concentrate on getting their, their, um, their recovery, getting their medication and their treatment and, um, and, and concentrate on that and concentrate on their family. So I'm just asking for everybody to support this motion. I think it's very important that it's supported. Thank you.
Councillor Gilroy, your second motion.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to support it, but I suppose maybe to ask that it, it be expanded a little bit more, that it's not just cancer patients. There's a lot of other chronic conditions and I'm sure councillor Catherley would, would, would also do that if she's on mute there.
Cal.
Yeah, um, just to, to extend that and also the concern that a lot of, a lot of debts from, um, insurance companies are not being collected. And I know, um, that has been raised by councillor Bree in the past at, at, at regional level. So, um, it's certainly something that should be considered. And again, but like the other two motions, I think we'll, we'll carry those forward as well.
Okay, thanks councillor Gilroy. Councillor Grady. You're on mute, councillor Grady, you're on mute? You're on mute? You're on mute again? You're still on mute? You're still on mute councillor Grady?
Sorry, Kehirlock. I would, uh, certainly like to support the motion. Um, it's, it's no later than a week ago, I had somebody who had made an application and was eligible, uh, for a medical card due to, um, they now had a, a cancer diagnosis. And the trouble and issues that they had to get that card issued was just incredible stuff. And it added a huge worry to their pathway, uh, of difficulty which they were on health-wise. So I think it's important that all aspects of, of, uh, care for indeed all people with long-term issues, our cancer patients, is looked at. And I asked, as councillor Gilroy has said, that he will bring it and, uh, the other members to the Health Forum, uh, to bring it and highlight it for the, the many people who it's an issue at the moment. And it's terrible to think that somebody would be post-camo and a knock on the door comes, uh, with a private debt collector coming and they're not able to fulfill the normal daily things of life and that they have to deal with this. So certainly I fully and wholeheartedly support, uh, councillor Catherley's motion.
Councillor Maguire.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, just want to add my, uh, agreement to this motion wholeheartedly. And if I could also, um, suggest an amendment to it. And I think it was raised in this chamber before, the issue of how some chronically ill patients have their medical cards taken from them or they are asked to confirm that they are still terminally ill in order to, uh, hold on to a medical card. It's incredibly insensitive and difficult thing for families to have to deal with. And it is inevitably the families and the carers who have to respond to those letters. Um, and I think there has to be a better, a more, uh, easier way and a much more compassionate way of dealing with this. I don't think it's an issue of major, uh, fraud, uh, which I presume is behind the, the searching for, for money for it. People are entitled to that care and they should not have to go through those hopes, hoops to, to receive it. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is agreed. I think we all support the motion. And motion twenty-nine councillor Walsh. And motion 29, Consul Walsh.
Thank you Cahill, look. Thank you Cahill, look, and I suppose this staff needs assessment is something that has arisen from staff and the concerns they have relative to the emergency department at Sligo University Hospital in terms of staffing levels, in terms of a plan and a strategy for unfilled shifts, and also a skills match among the nursing staff at any one rostered time. So that's the staff needs assessment, I suppose is something that has come out of the WRC, right, with the union and management at the hospital. And my understanding, as from last night, who, I suppose I spoke to a number of nurses, and that staff needs assessment has just been completed by Fiona MacDade, the National, the National Nursing Lead at the Emergency Medicine Programme. And we look forward to seeing that report as soon as is possible, and I know the nurses are anxious to see that report. There are a lot of staffing issues at the emergency department, and it's vital that there's a plan and a strategy in place for the new triage area, which we welcome, has opened last Friday at an investment of 3.1 million by the Irish taxpayer. The second piece in relation to 42 medical block, this is a no-brainer in the hospital, there's a lack of bed capacity across the whole hospital. We have a 42 bed block that has, is at detailed design stage, my understanding is that it's ready to go to procurement, and I suppose why isn't this medical block gone to procurement? This will ease the situation across the hospital, we've seen historic waiting lists, historic waiting times across multiple services in the hospital, particularly over the last 12 months, and why we have a new project ready to go, someone needs to hit the button on it, and we need to know why this is being held up, and who is holding this up. It's ready to go to procurement, and the people in this county want to know the date that we will have this project out to public procurement. I think it's vital for the progression of health infrastructure across the North West that these 42 medical blocks come on stream as soon as is possible. Thank you Cahill, look.
Consul O'Grady.
Thank you Cahill, look, I certainly support the motion, and I'm heartened that this staffing assessment for the ED section has been completed, and I hope that the recommendations, and it will be implemented, that it just won't be put on a shelf and just gather on it. There's staffing issues throughout the hospital, but I think it's never more evident than when you visit the ED department. As I, I welcome the opening of the triage centre unit last Friday, but every opening place is fine, you need staffing to staff them, and proper staffing. So I certainly support the motion as regards the ED. As regards the medical block unit, again, as Consul Walsh has said, we want to know why it hasn't gone out to procurement, and it's a long time in the plans, and what is holding up the procurement of it. So certainly I fully and wholeheartedly support the issues raised by Consul Walsh, thank you.
I just want to support the motion as well, and just to compliment the staff in, in the emergency department, and there have been incredible, and they are incredible at the moment, and I've seen this firsthand recently, and they're just looking for help. And I also welcome the completion of, of the staffing assessment, and like, like both members have said, I hope it doesn't lie idle on the shelf, and I think we should do everything we can as a council to make sure that doesn't happen. I would also support the motion. Motion 31, Consul Abrey.
Cahill, look, at the outset, can I say that I welcome the 1 million euro grant which has been allocated to advance the plans Sligo, Leitrim, Northern Counties, Railways, LNC or Greenway. It's acknowledged Cahill, look, that the development of the Greenway along the old rail route connecting Kallounie with Ballantyne, Drumhair, Glenfarne, Black Lion and Inniskillen will have a significant economic benefit for the entire region. I understand that the grant of half a million which was received in 2020, and the additional allocation of 1 million euro received last month, will now allow for the necessary documentation and plans to be prepared and submitted to go through the planning process on both sides of the border. And I'm also pleased to note that the tender documents for the construction contract for the overall project are being prepared. A cost benefit analysis carried out a number of years ago indicated that the completed Greenway would boost sending in the region by almost 7 million euro in the first year. And given the fact that it's a cross-border Greenway with 18 kilometres of the route located in Fermanagh, it obviously adds to the significance and importance of the project. Last year, the Taoiseach confirmed to the DAAL that 500 million euro was earmarked for shared island projects, and he referred to three specific projects, the Narrow Water Bridge, the Ulster Canal, and the Sligo Inniskillen Greenway. So hopefully Cahill, look, if planning permission can be approved for the project before the end of the year, we might see construction work commence on the Greenway early next year. And, you know, converting this, this used railway route into a cross-border multi-use trail for cyclists and walkers has been an objective of this council for some time, and I, I very much welcome the progress report we've received on the project, thank you Cahill.
Consul Abrey, Consul Healy.
I want to second the motion and the importance of it, this Greenway going down into Inniskillen and the towns and villages that it'll help along the way, thank you.
Okay, Consul McSharry.
Thank you Cahill, yeah, I support this motion, it's a while back that I remember we all met with our colleagues in Leitrim, and I know there has been a lot of work done on this initiative right across the board, it's a fantastic initiative, and I wholeheartedly support Consul Abrey's motion in this regard, thank you Cahill.
Okay, Consul McGuire.
And thank you, I too want to support the motion. This project had its genesis many, many years ago, and it was spearheaded by Ichband, the cross-border body. We have representatives from this council on it, and we share that body with our counterparts in Northern Ireland. And it is a fantastic project, it's one which, when I was Chair of Ichband, I particularly encouraged, I recognized that it would be a huge asset from a tourism development perspective, and indeed from an infrastructural perspective and recreational perspective for the people of that area, and hope that it will come at fruition soon. I'd like to acknowledge in particular the huge work that has been done, particularly by the group in Manor Hamilton, who have met with the 90 landowners and discussed with them individually the development of this project and their continued support for it, thank you.
Thank you, Consul Clark.
Yeah, thanks Cahill, look, I want to repeat, I was wanting to say things along the lines of Consul McGuire, as a consul who sits on Ichband at the moment, and, and did while Consul McGuire was Chair and where it was advanced, as a consul who met with Shane Ross and Eileen Foster to, to ensure that it was in the programme for government for Northern Ireland, and, and still monitoring the situation on a, on a weekly basis, and I'd like to pay time to the, to the, as, as Sinead did, the people in, in, in Manor Hamptons especially. And this, this is going to be a game changer for the North West and cross-border initiative, and Ichband is very much involved and pushing it from the Northern side, and as indeed from the Southern side. And I'd like to acknowledge the work that Darae Carrick has done in relation to the Sligo Parlament. And, and, and someday, not in the long distant future, you'll be able to walk from Inniskillen to Chariestown, and, and that'll be a great time for the whole North West link, thanks Cahill.
Okay, the motion is agreed, and I welcome Consul Healy and Consul Abrey supporting the Greenway. Had to stick that in there. Okay, motion.
Always supportive of Greenway, so that.
Thirty, 32, Consul Abrey again.
Cahill, look, there was a general welcome back in April when Fall to Ireland announced funding for the proposed new outdoor water-based activity facility centres, which are to be constructed at Ross's Point and Inniscroen. And I understand that the centres will provide hot water showers, changing and toilet facilities, secure storage, induction spaces, and that they will be fully wheelchair accessible. I welcome the progress report we've received confirming the grant aid. I note that the Ross's Point facility will be located in the grass area between the existing car park and the camping site, and the Inniscroen facility will be located in the grass area of the hollows. And I appreciate that it will take some time to carry out the necessary site investigations and prepare detailed design and, and documentation for the planning process. Now, while I understand that the construction work on the facilities will not take place in the current year, I would appeal to the executive to take the necessary steps to see the projects through the planning process as soon as possible, so as construction can commence early in 2023. And in the intervening period, particularly taking into consideration the increased interest in open water sea swimming, I would ask that we be provided at some stage with a report on how the facilities will be managed and operated, thank you Cahill.
Thanks Consul Abrey, Consul Healy, you seconded the motion.
I want to support the motion and the importance of them, which means, as it says, there's a lot of people who's swimming all year round, and especially these facilities for tourists that comes to the area, it's important that we have them, thank you.
Consul Walsh.
Yeah, look, I want to support the motion, we shouted a long time for this, and I do want to pay a tribute particularly to Ross Point Development Association, whom have spearheaded particularly the Ross's Point development. I look forward to the project progressing, and as we all know, the current facilities in Ross's Point are not fit for purpose, they're not fit for the amount of people that visit that particular area on a, every few, every week, so thanks Cahill, look.
Okay, motion is agreed, Consul Clark, your hand is still up, but I don't think you want to come in, do you? No, good, okay. 33, Consul O'Grady.
Thank you Cahill, look, I put this motion down again, calling on the Minister for Health, Stephen Donnelly, as a matter of urgency, to pay all frontline workers their bonuses as promised during the height of the pandemic. I, I'm disappointed that I felt I had to put it down once again, but I really feel the time for clapping, the time for telling them they're great, the time for telling them that their heroes is long over, and the time now has arrived to pay the bonuses as promised. England have paid, Scotland have paid, but we once again have fallen back in supporting our frontline workers. And in the past, with all governments, that's absolutely nothing new. And last week I seen where the, and I think it was put in as a deflection away from the not paying the bonuses, that public servants would get back to 37.5 hours, which I was working at the time, we reduced our, we had 39 hours, they reduced to 37.5, and for a year and a half, we had that privilege, but during the time of recession and difficulties, we raised our hours again. I feel that was put forward last week as a total deflection away. So I'm asking that the council write to Minister Donnelly demanding that he pay all frontline workers, and I stress all frontline workers, that the bonus as promised to them, thank you Cahill, look.
Okay, that motion is agreed. Agreed. Consul O'Grady, 35. Sorry, 34, 34.
Now, this is, thank you Cahill, look, this is a motion that had to come at the, maybe the October, November meeting, about the inadequate bus service to many areas of Sligo. And firstly, I'd like to say that I acknowledge the work that has been done, I acknowledge their engagement with us, the NTA, but I really feel we need time and place for a schedule of meetings to resolve this issue. I know that money, they have said money is an issue for replacing some of it, but I do think that if they sat down and used a bit of common sense, that reconfiguration of some of the services that are there could be done. So during the Christmas, when I was out walking, the amount of people that approached me as regards the lack of bus services, I met a woman who was going to buy a house in the west ward, and she said, there's no point in me coming here because there's no bus services in this area, in the Matherboy, Ballyduggan, general area, and there's many areas, Caltra, Carrero, and all the different areas that has been highlighted by councillors. But I do think we need to keep the pressure on the NTA to come back with a date, a date and a time for our next meeting to highlight the needs of the people that we all represent in the many areas of Sligo where the bus service is inadequate, thank you Cahill.
Thanks Consul O'Grady, Consul McSharry.
Thank you Cahill, yeah, and I would support the call to further engage with the National Transport Authority, I think the collaboration between Sligo County Council and the NTA has been extremely fruitful. Again, publicly, I would call on Araktas representatives, in particular Minister Frank Feehan and Deputy McSharry, Deputy Harkin and Deputy Kenny, to push for funding for the S3 bus route, which would be in fact a game changer for Sligo. I would like to acknowledge those Araktas members, because I did write to them, and I know that they are aware of it, and I know that they have impressed on the minister the importance of it. However, I think when we have a minister in the constituency, I would call on that minister, Frank Feehan, to deliver the funding, because unfortunately, the S3 was an excellent proposal, but as from March of last year, the funding is not in their allocation, so they can not, they can't move this initiative further. However, I feel if we do also write to the relevant ministers, and I think there was motions put in to do that, and I would renew that call, it is a collaborative approach, the only falls on us all, party political or not, to contact all our Araktas members to push for this, because I think the, the NTA want it, I think we're fortunate at the moment while we have a public transport friendly minister for transport, but the funding has to be delivered to the NTA to make it a reality. So I welcome the motion, I, I have to say, the meetings with the NTA have been hugely successful, as you know Cahill, but again, I call publicly on Minister Feehan and the Araktas members to deliver the funding, thank you.
Yeah, Consul Gibbons.
Cahill, look, I want to support that motion, I feel myself, the meetings that we had with the NTA can't stop, we have to keep that going, regardless where the funding is coming from, we are looking at a huge area within the west ward of Sligo and other areas, Caltra and places like that, but I mean to say, in the west ward alone, the amount of people that's elderly people that's in that area that was depending on public transport, and it is no longer there. We see every month motion, there's motions put in here in relation to people with disabilities and things like that, and in a lot of cases, a lot of these elderly people is the, the equivalent of a person with disabilities, their mobility is slowed down, they're not in a position to drive a car, some of them just physically cannot drive a car, and it's as simple as that, but it definitely is something that we need to push, we wouldn't want to take our foot off the pedal, we need to keep pushing this with the NTA, and as Consul McSharry says, we need to be putting pressure, severe pressure on the Araktas members, regardless of what they say, this route, that route, or the other route, every route is needed, deserves, the Matherboy area and the Caltra, and Caltra, the route is opened, the Western distributor route is actually opened that back up in the Caltra, put an extra bus route on that, I know it's going to take money to do so, but that's, that's the goal that we should be looking at, we shouldn't be waiting on them to come back to us and tell us what they can give us, we should be telling them what we want. After all, they're a state body, and if there's a state body, they're the funding from the state, we should be demanding from Araktas members that the funding is put in there to provide that service, thanks very much.
Consul Abrey.
I'll be brief Cahill, I, I fully support the, the, the motion as tabled by Consul O'Grady. I would be hopeful that the NTA would agree to meet us sooner rather than later, I think there was an indication last year that when they received their budget, would be prepared to meet us. I have to say that over the last 12 months, our meetings with representatives of the National Transport Authority have been very constructive, they responded very positively to the requests we have made, they proposed a, a, a solution to the difficulties we have, particularly in the urban area in relation to the, a new bus route, as Consul McSharry says, the, the new S3 route, which would, which would resolve practically all the difficulties in relation to public transport, bus transport in the Sligo urban area. They did point out however, that the one difficulty they had at that stage was that there was inadequate funding, and there was a request to go to the department and to the government for the funding. So we know Cahill, look, that three of the four DAAL deputies representing this constituency voted for the Taoiseach and voted for the government, so I would be appealing with my colleagues to the three DAAL deputies who are government supporters, to, to put on, to put the necessary pressure on the government to ensure that the funding is provided for this service, thank you Cahill.
Consul Abrey, Consul Catherine.
I, I'd just like to support the motion, and again, same as the other councillors, and I've been in attendance of a lot of the meetings, I do find that they're very beneficial because they actually do listen, but as was stated. But as was stated, the funding is now an issue. And I know that there are other services in other areas of Sligo that are requesting more frequent and newer bus routes as well and bus services. And I'd be hoping to keep that on the agenda as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Catherley. Councillor Mulvey?
Yeah, thanks, Kieran. And in support of councillor O'Grady's motion, I also, you know, along with yourself, attended those meetings. And while some of the meetings were Zoom meetings, they were very fruitful and there was good progress. And I certainly need, we feel that we all need an update on it because I know on the South Sligo region, there's a huge outcry for buses. Like certain parts out here, we might only have one bus or the certain sections won't have any bus. So we certainly need an update as soon as possible. Thank you.
Councillor Healy?
Yeah, I want to agree with all the councillors. They were very constructive meetings, but like that, it's down to funding now. And the important thing here is if we have buses running to our towns and villages around the place, that's an extra bit of infrastructure that we have. And it promotes people to use buses instead of using cars as well. So I think it's most important that we do get the backing of the TDs now on this.
I would also like to support the motion. I think we need to, we do need to follow up with the, with the NTA as a matter of urgency again. Councillor O'Grady, do you want to come back in just to finish off? You're on mute? You're on mute? You're on mute? You're still on?
Thank you, Kieran. Look, and I want to thank my colleagues for their support. Certainly, it's down to funding a lot of it. But I do think, taking an example of the Matherboy area, there's thirteen buses go from Sligo Bus Station out the Stranthill Road every day. And the Matherboy Road runs parallel with the Stranthill Road. And I do think while we're waiting on that funding, that there could be some configuration done of the existing services. And I'm sure in other areas, that could be done as well. So insofar as, you know, they can get off the hook with the lack of funding. And I do appreciate the work they have done and all that. But that's no good to the person who cannot get transport to where they want. Person who's paying thirty euros a week to get a taxi both ways to Sligo General. So I do think we need as a council to put extra pressure on them while they're waiting on the funding to configure the existing services that are there. So again, thank you, and I intend to keep this on the agenda until we get a satisfactory response. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor O'Grady. And you're thirty-five?
Second that motion?
Again, seconded by councillor Maguire. There's that.
Thank you, Kieran. Look, this has been an ongoing issue for many years. And a few people have approached me over in the coming area, the Coming Townland, which is the R two nine two road in the Coming Townland at the junction of the Coming Townland and Barnasrahi. And the difficulty that they have exiting their property. Now, in the past, this has been raised and there has been speed reduction, speed signs put up. But this certainly is not enough. And I do accept the report I was given. And I hope that some resolution will be found to leave the safety of the people exiting their homes in that, at that specific junction in the coming area as you go up the Barnasrahi Road. So I do hope that something will be found to alleviate that very, very serious problem for families. Thank you.
Councillor Maguire, you seconded the motion?
Yes, this is something that I've been in touch with the engineering department for some time on. As councillor O'Grady has said, it's a matter which has caused the residents a lot of issues for quite a period. And to be honest, at this point, I'm disappointed, I have to say, by the reaction that I've received. I think it's six months since I was promised a speed survey in this area. And it's a long time before that that this was originally raised. And the issue for many of these residents are actually getting older and they're finding it increasingly difficult to exit their own properties due to the speed of traffic coming along this way. We have discussed putting up bollards along the Barnasrahi entrance onto the R two nine two to try and prevent people from pulling in there. And, but that's a huge risk for the pedestrians and it's a route that a lot of people walk now frequently. So I would ask that, that we see some progress in relation to this. As I say, the speed survey was requested at least six months ago, if not longer. So I would hope that we'd see some progress. Please.
Okay, so the motion agreed. Agreed. Thirty-six, councillor Walsh?
Her reply, I think everyone knows that this is a sector that's hurting. And to call a spade a spade, that's probably on the floor. We've had no live events for almost two years now. And my own opinion on this has been made clear a number of times that we're way behind in terms where we need to be in terms of the number of events and the type of events we have in this county. We have huge amount of work to do in this area, particularly in this council over the next three years. And this will be something that I'd be keeping on the agenda. In relation to the reply, I'm not going to go into huge detail on it, but just a few questions for Miss Clark, if she can. Just on the live, local live performance scheme, I know Miss Clark has mentioned that the last time it opened for artists, musicians and producers, it went through the department directly. But the, I suppose the angle I'm looking at this is that five million have been made available for the local authority to put on live performances in this county. So that's something we might look into because my understanding is that that's for one, if not two, large events in the county, five million, as we had done last year. And I suppose if she can come back to me with, when we will have an advertisement out for that. On the regional festival and participation scheme, I welcome that this funding is now available again. And Miss Clark, my advice of the twenty-three thousand five hundred from Fodja Ireland for Sligo is online with previous year's funding. And I would ask that Miss Clark advertises this as soon as is possible so we can have a summer filled with live events. Because people, particularly the voluntary groups and festivals, need timeline into this. They need to know if they're funding available. And I welcome that twenty-five thousand has been made available for the St Patrick's Day Festival. It's welcome news that we will have a parade again. And I want to thank Miss Clark and her officials for the work they've done in obtaining that funding. Just one final point on the outdoor public space scheme. I welcome that Sligo has been successful for two hundred and fifty thousand. And I welcome Miss Clark's proposal in relation to Clever Retail Park that we will have a dedicated space for. Will there be consultation on this or has there been consultants appointed? Is there a timeline on this in terms of design and planning or when it is likely that this outdoor will be, because I need it and so I know we have to. The way, again, for that work. We do need a dedicated cultural space for performances outdoor. And we have two hundred and fifty thousand be made available from the department. I welcome the fact that it's slightly outside Sligo Town. And we might look at putting one of these spaces into the sticks or a bit of the countryside if we have funding available going forward. So thanks, Miss Clark. Kieran.
Okay, Miss Clark, Dorothy, do you want to come back on some of them questions?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Kieran. Look, yeah. The five million for local authorities, yeah, I will come back to you on that, councillor Walsh, if that's okay. In relation to the Fodja Ireland funded regional festival fund for, and the events, we just got word of that last week. So yes, we will be advertising it as soon as is possible to get the word out there. So we will be moving on that, hopefully this week or next week, certainly. The St Patrick's Day festival funding, yes, that's, I think you've just welcomed that. So yes, we will be certainly, and we are working now on in conjunction with Fodja Ireland and Sligo Bead in relation to that festival around St Patrick's Day for Sligo in 2022. And the outdoor space scheme, I don't have any timelines yet, but you're probably talking about 2023 before that will be delivered on. We obviously have a bit of work to do yet, just in terms of putting in place a team, just assessing the site. But yeah, as, as that project evolves or as preparation of that project evolves, we certainly keep members informed in relation to timelines and all of that. So I will revert to that at some stage in the future.
Thanks, Kieran. And I want to thank the director for her reply. Can I just, in conclusion, can I just ask her, when is it expected the festival and events coordinator post will be advertised? I know it's in this year's budget, as it was in last year's budget. It's vital we have a festival events manager in place in the local authority to manage schemes like this and to manage. Hopefully, we will have a festival event strategy for this county going forward because we certainly need one. Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, Kieran. Look, yeah, the, I did review the situation. And we did in-house here before Christmas and probably early enough in December, just to kind of see where we were at with the events. And one of the, I did actually have a discussion as well with our local Fodja Ireland people here in relation to, I suppose, the guidance and the direction and maybe the reviewed policy that will be forthcoming from Fodja Ireland. And I suppose in that context, I suppose I didn't make any decision in relation to the recruitment of it before Christmas was because, I suppose, from a Fodja Ireland perspective, they don't seem to have. I suppose they're so tied up, I suppose, at this point in time with other matters related to COVID and the industry and training and all of that type of thing, that they haven't. I wasn't given any clear indication as to when maybe they, from a national perspective, we would have Fodja Ireland policy, which would take account of how we're going to move out of the restrictions, the COVID restrictions. So look, we will be keeping in touch with Fodja Ireland in that regard. And we may be actually seeking a meeting, maybe with, or even a phone call with the people in Fodja Ireland who actually look after that area. And certainly in the context of ourselves and recruiting a person, it would be of benefit. And as soon as we feel that we can move with a certain amount of direction and guidance from, from, we'll say, Fodja Ireland in relation to the national strategy, we'll certainly be moving on it. And I know councillor Walsh, you're very interested in this and we've had a couple of conversations in it. But at this point in time, it might be a bit premature us to move forward with the recruitment of a person until we know exactly maybe what the lay of the land would be in relation to what that person would be doing. And obviously, national policy would be a great help for us in that regard.
Okay, councillor Queen, you want to come in?
Just a quick question, Mayor Philcy. In appointment of the coordinator for the tourism and sector, will that be included in the workforce plan, this individual?
I'll take that, Dorothy.
We've had a little.
The workforce plan is currently being worked upon. And there will be, we'll be looking at tourism overall in our workforce plan. And what I would say is, it needs to be remembered, there is a review of the Sligo tourism taking place at the moment, and that also impacts on the way we move forward. But the workforce plan will be looking at modern tourism. We need to look at the whole of the organisation and how the organisation is set up to deliver services into the future. We have to do it. We'll be back to the department, I'm hoping, by the end of February with an answer of what our workforce plan will look like and then we'll share it with the unions as well.
Put on your microphone.
Listen to enlist all the projects, projects that has been in the pipeline now for a number of years. I would suggest that we have a discussion on how we're going to fund these projects.
That's cool, that's.
Is it on? I'm sorry. Yeah, that's all. Yeah.
Listen, I, since I've come to this organisation, I've focused on a number of things. But two big things for me have been, one, the workforce and two, the financial review of the organisation. As I said at the budget meeting, the last thing we need to do is to go back to where we were previously in being part of a financial plan. In March, we will be coming to the elected members in relation to all match-funded projects. But needless to say, and I don't think it's a secret, we're quite oversubscribed at the moment. We're stretched on match-funded projects. So that's why it's important that we come with you to report early March and we can clearly outline what the financial position is in relation to all match-funded projects.
That's what we, we just. Okay, councillor Walsh, you happy? The motion is agreed? Agreed. Okay. Thirty-seven, councillor Gibbons? Seconded by councillor Healy.
While under investment in apprenticeships.
I'm proposing to continue this meeting for thirty minutes. And we will have to.
I'll take that.
Yeah, hopefully. I hope you're right. Councillor Gibbons?
While under investment in apprenticeships predates COVID, the pandemic has had a severe impact on the apprenticeship system. After the upheaval of 2020, this year was a hugely important one in terms of getting the system back up and functioning as a sufficient capacity. Information released by the department shows that the government have actually saved fifty-five fifty-five million from the waiting list. This is due to not having to pay as many trades apprentice allowances as their time spent off-site learning in college. Despite this, the government has only invested thirty-two million back into addressing the waiting list since the beginning of the pandemic, meaning they have a net savings of twenty-three million. Currently, eight thousand one hundred and eighty-one apprentices are waiting for assignment to off-the-job training. That represents almost half of the trade apprentices unable to advance or complete their apprenticeships. While that is down from the peak of twelve thousand in August, it is higher than the start of the year. We have longstanding skills shortages in the construction sector. The failure to address the backlog in training tradespeople will have a real impact on the supply of skills we need to deliver housing and retrofit targets. The government has still not come forward with any real plans or timeframes for clearing the backlog. Meanwhile, we have four-year apprenticeships taking five to six years to complete, far from making the necessary investment in the ramp-up capacity. The government is not reinvesting and saving that they have made from the backlog. Instead of taking responsibility, the minister of state, Niall Collins, is using the backlog as a justification to help push through unpopular reforms of the traditional apprenticeship model. He claims that the COVID has highlighted limitations in the current model. And this is completely disingenuous. These planned reforms have been labelled by Connect Trade Union as essential privatisation of the services. The reforms aims to move to a decentralised model that gives the greater control of the private sector, to the private sector and provides less government oversight. We need to value our apprenticeship system and invest accordingly to build it in the model that it has been originally in. Thanks very much. I'd ask you, Walter.
Thanks, councillor Gibbons. Councillor Clark?
Yeah, thanks, Kieran. I want to support this motion. I think. Councillor Gibbons is on the ball here. I said that there is no more value to the Irish economy than the apprenticeship thing. Every sector is struggling to get people, qualified people now at the moment. Plumbers, chippies, carpenters, roofers, tylers, whatever you name in relation to the industry, the building industry especially, is a chart. And we must ensure that those apprenticeships are treated with respect and that they have a living wage while they're going through their apprenticeship. Many of those young people are struggling with accommodation and struggling with long journeys. Like I know that a electrician from Drumore West has to travel to Waterford to do the course. And, and it's a long way down and it's an expensive trip and on the minimum wage is not easy. So I wholeheartedly support the motion and we need to expand those. wholeheartedly support the motion, and we need to expand those apprenticeships more and more. Thanks, Kehirlock.
Councillor Healy?
Yeah, I want to support the motion as well, and the importance of, as we says, the apprenticeships. Knowing a good few lads that work, even when our the Office of Public Works, that have travelled down to Kerry to do their apprenticeships, their apprenticeships now is going to hit six years. That should mean it's unacceptable. Because remember, they only still get the same money until they have the paperwork done to show that they're fully qualified. So that means that some of these lads are doing extra two years with different contractors because they haven't got the full qualification. So it needs to be looked at, and it needs to be looked at serious. I was talking to a plumber yesterday, that he can't get anyone to take up apprenticeships because of the holdup. So, I mean, it's something that, it's something that we were, we were always great in this country, at young people having a trade in the eighties, that should mean that we built the world, the Irish, on the trades that we learnt. But it's important now that we we make sure that the investment goes into it and the programmes are finished in time. Thank you.
Yeah, look, and I'd like to support the motion as well, from somebody that has background in. In construction, I think it was never more important than now to have these apprenticeships up and running. We see, we see a shortage of of trained construction workers, and I think we're also going to move into a time where these, where your paperwork is going to be so important. In my day, the paperwork wasn't as important, but we're certainly going to be coming into that time now. And so that motion is agreed. Okay, thirty-eight, councillor Gibbons? Don't know where you're going with this one, but anyway.
Go on, you go thinking. Minister for Housing and Dares O'Brien has proudly delivered just five per cent of the four hundred and forty affordable cost rental homes promised in two thousand and twenty-one. Minister O'Brien promised to deliver four hundred and forty affordable cost rental homes in two thousand and twenty-one. Three hundred and ninety, ninety of these were to be bought by approved housing bodies through the new cost rental equality loan fund, with a further fifty to be delivered by Owen Murphy's Services Site Fund. According to a response to a preliminary question received in December, just twenty-five of these homes have been tenanted to date in two thousand and twenty-one. This is a delivery rate of just five per cent. Further forty are promised to be tenanted before the end of the year. But whether this actually happens is an open question. The fact that the government only promised four hundred and forty affordable cost rental homes in two thousand and twenty-one was a clear evidence that they were not serious about addressing the affordable crisis in the rental sector. That they have only delivered twenty-five of these homes to date shows that neither have they the will nor the ability to deliver cost rental on the scale that is needed. It should be remembered that the Service Site Fund was launched by Owen Murphy in two thousand and eighteen. It was a fund, councils to deliver six thousand two hundred affordable homes to rent or buy in two thousand and twenty-one. The first fifty of these homes have not been completed. Yet despite repeated promises by Minister O'Brien that they would be completed this year. So after a year and a half in office, Minister O'Brien has not delivered a single affordable home to purchase through the Service Site Fund and just twenty-five affordable cost rental homes through the cost rental equality equality loan scheme. Minister O'Brien had promised that two thousand and twenty-two would be a year to deliver on affordable housing with this lack, with this track record. That is a promise that will be hard to deliver. I'm asking you all to support the motion. I feel if somebody has made a commitment that they would deliver these houses, had a year and a half in office, the track record beforehand, and yet five per cent, this is all that has been delivered. I think myself, if they're not fit for the job, they shouldn't be in it. So I'd ask you all to support the motion.
Councillor Healy?
Yeah, listen, and supporting the motion as well as that, we all know the importance of having your own home and the amount of houses that's out there already. Young people in this county can't get a house and can't get on the property market with the way things are going. And we need affordable houses, and we need social housing. And we've seen here, if the local authorities are giving the money, if the if the minister gives it to the local authority, he will build all the houses he wants, but to give us it. But it's unacceptable the way things are going on at the moment. Thank you.
Councillor Gilroy?
I think I heard a statement here before about, I don't know, I'm not going to go into it. This is just throwing politics into it, I think, and it's nothing to do with our duties here. I went through some of the achievements that he has achieved, and I suppose we have to look on the basis that the only people who never get anything wrong are the people who never do anything. And I don't think he's that sort of minister. So I've listed some of his achievements. The largest housing budget on record, passed the first ever Comprehensive Affordable Housing Act, reformed the Land Development Agency and placed it on a statutory footage, publication of Housing for All, enhanced effective concrete block scheme, established the Housing Commission to examine long-term housing policy issues, banned co-living, passed six separate pieces of tenant protection legislation, approved more than two hundred new posts for local authority housing delivery teams across the country, extended the increase had to buy to thirty thousand, opened the first ever cost rental units in the history of the state, signed the Lisbon Declaration on Ending Homelessness by two thousand and thirty, limited deposits and extended protection for student renters, extended rent pressure zones and limited rent increases and general inflation to general inflation or two per cent, whichever is the lowest, legislated to protect traditional family homes from public purchases, brought back over three thousand six hundred vacant social homes into use with a further three thousand targeted, one point three billion in urban regeneration funding, streamlined the buy and renew scheme and extended repair and lease schemes to sixty thousand, slash red tape on developing new social housing by extending the single-stage approved process to six billion, increased funding for housing adaptation grants for older people and people with disabilities, increased funding under the Disabled Persons Grant Scheme, introduced a reformed local authority home loan scheme to further support access to homeownership for credit-worthy homeowners. The government has a plan, Housing for All, which has set us on a path of delivering three hundred thousand new housing units by the end of two thousand and thirty. Ninety thousand of these will be social, thirty-six thousand will be affordable, eighteen thousand of these will be cost rental homes. It's a plan with real ambitions, guaranteed investment and fresh ideas to deliver housing for real people and create a long-term sustainable housing system. It's about delivering housing of different tenures in the right places, gives certainty and stability for those who want to finance and build homes in order to deliver housing at the sustainable scale we need across the country. Capital from all sources, including private investment. I think lots of other things, but I think I could go into them. But we know that there was plans to develop housing, social housing in parts of Dublin, and one party voted against it, and Dublin Corporation, to block it. And we know who that party is. So I think voting no confidence in the minister is a silly little political game. And I think, you know, we might think back to last year when we had our AGM here and councillor Gibbons launched an attack on Fianna Fáil that day and accused us of not fulfilling an agreement, when in fact he and his colleagues were the ones who broke the agreement. But he hasn't had the manners or the respect to come back and apologise in public for what he said on that day. So I call on him to do that now and withdraw this silly little political motion. Thank you.
Councillor Clark? Councillor Clark?
Thanks, Kehirlock. I don't know, I haven't followed that. That's a fair statement. Just in relation to the vote of no confidence. I have neither confidence or no confidence in the minister, but I would definitely like to meet the minister. And he has indicated that there will be a review completed of the tenant purchase scheme early in February, if I'm correct in speaking about that. So a vote of no confidence coming out in a pandemic like this in relation to delivery of houses with the labour force at seventy per cent, I think it is politically grandstanding, and I think that I won't be supporting the motion, and I might have to stay on it whenever the vote is. Thanks, Chair.
Okay. Look, the motion, the motion certainly, I don't think the motion certainly isn't agreed. Councillor Gibbons, do you want to come back in?
I do want to come back. I do want to come back, and it's all right in saying what the promise is down the road and what the promise isn't down the road. Those four hundred and forty billion houses, affordable cost rental homes promised for two thousand and twenty-one, five per cent of that was delivered. Now, at the end of the day, I don't give a damn. You can turn around and say what promises made and what promises are made. But I'd like to go back to what councillor Gilroy said, that at the last AGM that I made, that there was a pact, and that it was me that broke the pact, and that I made remarks that I should apologise for. What I made remarks, anybody can go back and see what the agreement was and who broke that agreement.
Okay, okay, okay. Listen, listen, listen. You have a motion down here. Motion thirty-eight, you have a motion down here. That's what we're going to talk about.
I can tell you this much.
There's not full agreement. There's not full agreement on the motion.
Any of my remarks, and that was a cheap shot, at least, no, the remark was made. That was a cheap shot that was made. Under no circumstances, I'm a person that might.
Produce the document. Produce the document. I can produce the one signed by your predecessor.
Just one, one minute, one minute, I still follow through. That was the other aspect.
Okay, okay, you can take this, you can take this up some other time, Harry. You can take this, you can you can take this up some other time, councillor Gibbons, honestly. You can take this up some other time.
This was a motion that I was.
We have fifteen minutes. We have fifteen minutes to finish this meeting. Is the motion, is the motion agreed? The motion isn't agreed.
Are you refusing to allow me to come back in my motion? Are you refusing to allow me to come back on my motion?
If you want to talk about the motion, by all means you can, but don't deviate from it.
I intend to talk about the motion. People out there are in desperate need of homes and houses, and not what somebody done, the promises that are made. Now, I made a clear error with this motion. If a person isn't fit to do the job, they shouldn't be in it. You do not come along and make promises and then not deliver on them. It's as simple as that. Now, if you want to vote for it, vote for it. If you want to vote against it, vote against it. But let the public out there be the deciders. Thanks very much.
Kevin in Goneskud called the roll. We didn't hear a word you said there. Now, the last statement you made, but all the better.
All right, councillor Baker's not logged in. Councillor Bree? Councillor Cassery?
Against.
Councillor Clark?
Abstain.
Councillor Connolly?
He's not there.
Not there, yeah? Councillor Fox?
Not there.
Against.
Councillor Gibbons?
For.
Councillor Gilroy?
Against.
Councillor Healy? Councillor McSherry? Councillor McQuarrie, not there. Councillor Maloney?
Not there.
Against.
Who said, who said against there?
Councillor Maloney.
Come on, then. Okay.
Councillor Mulby?
Against.
Councillor Brady?
Against.
Councillor Queenen? Councillor Taylor?
Against.
And councillor Walsh?
Against.
Refund the motion, nine against one extension.
That's the end of it. Okay, councillor Gibbons, thirty-nine? Have a second there. Councillor Healy?
Councillor Healy. Kehirlock, it's for over the last number of years, and there's been no consultation with the relevant bodies that's involved, whether it was the likes of the Anglers Association and other the anglers themselves and people that use that lake on a non-home basis. There's been restrictions put on the lake in relation to fishing. Now, I think myself that I'm asking that we contact the inland fisheries to find out why, and maybe get a report back on, see what is the problem that is there. Now, I fished Lochhill all my life, and my uncles and my grandfather before, and even my sons fought, they fish Lochhill, and we have boat there, always had a boat on Lochhill, and we fished it. Lochhill was never a great fishing lake. Realistically, it wasn't a thing that people would up there. You could be up there and for a season, you were lucky, you got two or three salmon off it for the full season. It was a very hard lake to fish. But for some reason or another, right? Now, a lot of people have kind of fell away from this because they've lost interest, and they liked a bit of trout fishing and whatever else that goes on it. But last year, there was a system put into place where it was a catch and release. This year, you're not allowed to take a fish off the lake, which is a lake that opens on the first of January. You're not allowed to take a fish off it until May, should the salmon season is actually over at that stage. And I look at Lochhill, and I kind of, I know the same amount of boats is in fishing it like what fished it fifty years ago, where you'd maybe got a hundred, hundred and fifty boats to be on that lake fishing it. Today, you get very little people kind of in the winter months because the incentive isn't there. But for those that want to fish it, and those that travel to Sligo to fish the lake, can't do it now, because the one thing is, if they do it, they're not allowed to fish it, they're not allowed to fish for salmon until come May. And what I said, I'd ask on behalf of the anglers was to look for some report. So I'm asking that we write, maybe the Department of the Land Fisheries, to find out, maybe get a report back, and maybe get some involvement as well, ask the request from them to take the anglers in future in on their decision-making. To try, I think myself, it's a massive resort, Sligo or Lochhill, it's something that we could use, it was promoted. We're going to use it now, we use it for regalas, we use it for different times, and water sport and whatever else. And I think that fishing, it's been hammered on, and I don't know why. It's, they're saying that the fish isn't in it, but it was always a hard lake. It's just that it's not being fished to its full potential. As well as that, I think there's a problem there with the licence because of the tags. A lot of people that catch fish, it's, they're not bothering sending back in the tags, and I know that this has a bit of a problem. But I'd look, I'd ask you all to support the motion. Motion is there. Thanks very much.
Councillor Healy, support the motion. Is that, is that agreed? Agreed? Councillor Bree, forty?
Kehirlock, I realise and acknowledge that in order to solve the housing crisis, there's a need for a major public house building programme funded by the state and controlled by the local authorities. However, in addition to a house building programme, I believe action must also be taken in regard to the large number of dwellings which are lying vacant in the midst of the housing crisis. Indeed, I've been highlighting this issue for quite some time. It's now accepted that the introduction of a vacant homes tax can act as a significant lever to increase housing supply, end the scourge of dereliction, and put vacant homes back into use. In the most, in its most recent report, Geodirec found that more than ninety-two thousand homes in the state are currently vacant. Now, while government members have talked about a vacant homes tax, there is no commitment in the government's most recent housing for all strategy to introduce it or to indicate a timeline for introducing it. Now, I understand that it's important, before introducing such a tax, to have an understanding of the quantity and locations of long-term vacant and derelict properties. It's also essential to identify the reasons for vacancy. In some cases, there will be a genuine and acceptable reason for vacancy, such as refurbishment work, the temporary absence of owner for medical reasons or pending the grant approbate for a deceased person's estate. So in this context, appropriate exemptions from a tax will have to be considered. However, as a result of the current housing crisis, I think it has heightened public awareness, and people are now demanding action by the government to turn derelict and vacant properties into homes. The most recent research indicates that we have the tenth highest housing vacancy rate in the world, and I think this is a national scandal. In my opinion, it's immoral and unjust to have dwelling houses lying vacant in Sligo and elsewhere while families are crying out for accommodation. I'm therefore proposing that, in view of the ever-intensifying housing crisis, this meeting calls on the government and the Minister for Finance
Agreed. Councillor Gilroy?
Clarification, vacant homes and that. No. There's a major problem in this area. There's, I think there's thirteen houses between my house and my mother's, and eight of them are holiday homes that are vacant for eighty, ninety per cent of the year. And I really think if we're doing something like this, and if we're supporting something like this, they should be included because those houses are needed for people who need homes. And due to whatever way. And due to whatever way we want to look at it, there's definitely shortage of houses. We also have cases in rural Sligo, a woman came here who built a house back twenty eight years ago but maintained the old town, just kept it up because her parents are old and had been maintained. But to be abandoned, she had to declare it abandoned in order to get planning permission. It's a perfect house. It might not be something someone might want to live in for their entire life. But it certainly would suit a young couple starting off or somebody with maybe one child or something like that. There's an awful lot of them out there that need to be brought in to back into being houses. But I have no problem supporting the vacant house tax, but I think it should be across the board. Thank you.
Ciaran, I understand that there is a tax on holiday homes. The issue here is homes that there is no tax on or houses that there is no tax. And as councillor Gilroy points out also, houses that have been cleared derelict, which would, a small amount of money could be put back into use and they're not even registered in. It's the Central Statistics Office information. It's very hard to identify them. And I understand the department has been looking at this. But I think it's at this stage, while the department appears to be sympathetic to the concept, I think we just need to push them that bit further to deliver sooner rather than later.
Councillor Healy and then councillor Clark.
Yeah, just on the issue there, councillor Gilroy said as well about that house down in North Sligo where the woman had to say it was vacant to get it or not, not being used. That's all down to planning. So I mean, we have to be looking at our planning again if we're looking at them issues because you have to put that down. Otherwise, you won't get to build. So that's another issue we need to be looking at.
Okay, councillor Clark.
Yes, Ciaran, thank you. I too would have no great difficulty supporting the motion. I think it's proper in order. I have a few concerns. What is, would this tax that be raised be kept in the county? And what workload will be put on the housing staff to establish the listing for the tax? And also, we have in our power as a council to CPO houses that are derelict that can be brought into the housing list. It is a wide ranging proposal and concerns. I know the councillor Connolly had a house in Connolly Park in Tabor Curry that is causing some difficulty and he wanted to get it CPO'd. And the process is three years long. Maybe a tax would help that situation, but I'd like it to be broadened out more. I'm not against the proposal, but I'd like to hear more meat on the bones. Thanks, Chair.
Could we? Yeah, we can support the motion, yeah. Okay, we'll support the motion and move on. Councillor Gilroy, forty one.
Thanks, Ciaran. Look, discrimination really between those of us who have and those who have and those who have not. And we're the ones in all of County Sligo who have not bought electricity and gas. And there's a special deal offered. I was just looking this morning at the figures that were available for for electricity and you find that the special deal, just one of them there that I was looking at. If you have both electricity and gas, you can have a thousand and ninety six would be your annual cost if you have only for electricity. If you have only electricity, it's one one nine one. So it's almost a hundred euros a year, ten percent of a difference on the rates offered to people in areas with dual prices. So I think it would only be fair that this would be taken away. If it's not available to you to go with the dual plan, you should be offered the lowest available price. And I think that's only fair. The second part of the motion refers to VAT. And if any of you ever bought a property or sold a property, you will find that your solicitor charges you for the fees. But the land registry tax or the, I can't think of the name for it now, that that is not subject to VAT because it's already a tax. And I think that goes back to European ruling. I know myself from the bill being energy rating, the registration to SEI is not subject to VAT because it's viewed as being a tax on a tax. So you pay that on the fees, but not on the actual registration. So I think the public service obligation should not be subject to that. So I call for your support. Thank you.
Councillor Healy, you just seconded the motion.
Yeah, just seconded. And it's an awful pity to think that we have the core of gas field and not fair from us and it's, and gas is not coming to any part of this part of the country. It's unbelievable, I think.
Okay, okay. Councillor Clark, have you still your hand up there? Do you want to come in again or was that up from the last time?
No, no, I'm happy. Thank you. Sorry about that, Chair.
Okay, is the motion agreed? Grade forty two councillor Gilroy.
Second, councillor. I suppose thanks for the report. It really doesn't give much information, unfortunately. There's been quite a bit of announcements. And I was among yourself, Ciaran, like and others who received a copy of an announcement from Minister Humphries, I think it was about, about the funding. And it was embargoed till the next morning, but several people had it on the radio that day and on local papers and all the rest. The actual notification to us only came out this week, about a week after we had been told from other angles or read it in the press. It's a bit disappointing. I had lobbied on parts of this issue as well about looking at particular places for particular services. The, I spoke to the chairperson of the community council who had not been informed of this. Some of the landowners whose land appeared to be taken into this had not been consulted. And there was definitely a bit of hurt out there. And it was added to, I think, by some of the pronouncements that were made in the media. I think in any area, be it in Sligo Strand Hill, Ballinmore, Tabor Curry or Sligo Drumcliff, I think if there is funding applications, really, the councillors of that area should be included in it. We all make reps about different things. Some of us might get more into a particular one than in one area than another. But we've all made representations, we're all talking to people on the ground. And I think it's vital that we're all kept informed of these things. And I see the report on the update from last year's announcement and that that's all to be finished by October of this year, but I'll be revisiting it to see if it has all been delivered by October. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo the words of councillor Gilroy. And the most important thing here in any of these projects is communication. That's the most important thing. And there was a lack of communication in relation to some of this funding that went out. And there is a lot of hurt and disappointment out there in Ballasadaire regarding this. And I'm aware that a number of emails have been sent in to Sligo County Council regarding this. So as it says, the most important thing is communication with the community. They're the ones that are going to be there, they're the ones that are going to be receiving and they're the ones that we need. They're helping support to get any of these projects over the line. And I think that if anything, we should be learning from these. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Walsh.
Yeah, I want to specifically welcome the huge amount of funding for Ballasadaire. While I can understand where councillor Gilroy is coming from, these schemes open up so quickly. And as part of the scheme, I suppose when it open up, you know, there's a project team ticket on and a consultation brought forward there. That's what happens with the U R D F and the U U D F, both them schemes. It's a drawn out process. Just on the Ballasadaire piece, I know that the landowners were consulted because I have spoken to three of them myself in relation to possibilities and proposals that may come forward out of the consultation. And I want to thank Michael Carty and his team specifically in the department for the huge level of work that he has put in to this and engaging with a number of people. And this follows on from the T and V that has been received two years post this. So it's a huge level of funding from Ballasadaire, a potential game changer. And the people I have spoken to in Ballasadaire firmly welcome the funding and look forward to the consultation. Thanks, Ciaran.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. Just to welcome the funding as well. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And just to welcome the funding and to say that I suppose any, any town